Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. We are ready to begin this morning's special board meeting. The special school board meeting of May 7th, 2021 is now called to order. The time is 11:00 a.m. We would like to take this opportunity to remind the members of the public of the district mission, which is to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest personal potential and the district vision to be a world-class school system. This morning's agenda includes public comments and six items under Board Business. Board members, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll move to adopt the agenda as published.
Second. Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Thank you, Ms. Gittens. And please record your votes.
I'm gonna, I didn't bring my computer out.
So just yes.
You can't get on over there.
No, I don't know. No.
Madam Chair, my password is expiring as we speak, so I don't think I can get in, so I...
Okay. Thank you.
I'm gonna go ask Lizette to change it for me.
You can change it, just do all control.
It didn't work.
Mine is a yes, so.
Yes.
I tried to change mine.
I can't again see that, so can you tell me if it's... Okay, 7-0, motion carries. Thank you. The next items on the agenda is public comment. Ms. DePree Bruno, please address the item of public comment.
Good morning, and thank you, Madam Chair. School board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on the meeting's agenda or any other matter relevant to the operation of the school district. If you completed a blue card, please put it in the basket provided in the back. If you need a blue card, they're located in the hallway. The rules concerning public comment are posted in the back, and public comment is through the central microphone in the back. Please be advised that the board does not respond during public comment to remarks made by speakers. At the end of the public comment period, the board chair, Ms. Jordan, will address concerns or the assignment of any concerns or requests to the superintendent. Per Board Policy 1.181, it is in effect and requires everyone to wear a mask on school board property. Speakers and those attending the meeting are expected to act in a respectful manner. The purpose of public comment is to provide feedback. Personal attacks on individuals or abusive language are prohibited. In addition, clapping, hissing, and booing, unreasonably loud and/or offensive language, swearing, cursing, or a display of temper are prohibited. Speakers who fail to follow proper decorum in the chambers will be ruled out of order. Any speaker continuing with such remarks will be required to relinquish the microphone per Board Policy 1.11 and may be removed from the chambers. There will only be one more warning. Per Board Policy 1.11, the time per speaker is three minutes. You will find a countdown on the big screen in the front of the room. Once your time has elapsed, the microphone will automatically shut off. We encourage you to address the board as a whole versus individual board members as they act as a collective body. Please state your name prior to making your public comment, and I will call all of the names at one time. Please follow the staff's direction. Madam Chair, there are nine speakers for public comment.
They're in the other room.
So would you like me to go ahead and call them?
Yes, would you please?
Doug Santini, Tara Jenner, Cory Dai, Christine Diviglio, I believe it's Divigelli, Go ahead, Mr. Santini.
Mr. Santini, you can, you can, Dr. Santini, excuse me, you can proceed.
I can hear you.
Now, let's make sure that, let's make sure that the mic is on.
Yeah.
There you go. I heard you.
Thank you.
Well?
Yes.
You're good, Dr. Santini. No, you're, you're good. You can speak now.
I'm okay now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. I might be muffled up with the mask on.
No, you're good.
Good morning, board members. I apologized to a couple, one of the board members, Ms. Patrica, because I have a dolphin mask on, and she likes the Patriots, and Dr. Atkins likes the Buccaneers, so we might be in situations there. I wanted to come and speak this morning because I've been in the district several years, as you know, from a teacher to a board member to a principal to a county administrator. And I went through this situation with an interim superintendent and a permanent superintendent. And right now, with an interim superintendent, we found somebody from the community that was not involved in the school system at that time, and there's two or three people out in the community now that would serve that purpose. And I think that's your best deal at this point, because what you have is a split situation, and to take a lot of time to have a consultant do an interim search, to me, is your energy should be on the permanent person for, for the, for, for, for the superintendency. That person's gonna be here for a long while. The person you bring in interims is here to bring the board together, help do the daily things that are going on around the school system. I think you need to have somebody really maybe that's been a superintendent and that could do the job for you. So I'm not mentioning names to you or anything, I just, I feel that the important process right now is to get someone in there that most of you would know, and that person could bring the board together as a group and then do your permanent search. I wish you all luck in what's happening. I think that's important, but I do think our students and our, and our teachers and our administrators, they really need the support of this board to go forward at this point. So a lot of times, these things don't pan out like you want them to, but yeah, I think you really need to look at that permanent superintendent and work on that. Thank you. Good luck.
Hey, it hasn't, the irony isn't lost on me that those of you on the dais actually having your job description a requirement to be able to hire and fire the superintendent, yet some of you believe that you need an outside consultant in order to help you do this, but you don't seem to have a problem hiring a consultant potentially, based on the numbers from what I've been hearing in the background, with an anorexic amount of data available to you on who and what they are. So I spent about three and a half hours last night looking through the proposals by these three potential consultants and their, or companies, and I found some very interesting information out. Cole Peacock, his LinkedIn, by the way, is broken off of your website, so you have to manually put it in, doesn't show a great deal of continuity in his own employment. 2008, Game Nation, 2009, a different company, 2010, left Chico's, 2012, started WeVets, 2013, you get the gist, okay? Let's see, he's Facebook friends with Pruitt, who I've heard in the background might be one of your potential candidates for interim superintendent, if not longtime superintendent. Have a little problem with that. Let's see, he's in charge of Seed and Bean now, although he's not planning on charging you anything, he is influenced by Bill Gates. He endorsed Cashman, who's another one of your particular candidates for consultant, and is friends with Jane Cuckle and has been endorsed by her, and he signed up with Cannabis News. Okay, yes, technically, that's all legal, but is this the presentation we want to have our students to have? Let's see, Scott Cashman, again, website broken, even his link to his website on LinkedIn is broken, so I had a look, let's see, he's not gonna charge any more than $2,500, but for the last nine-plus years, he's been in charge of the hospital opposite Lee County. If you look at his actual Facebook page, he's also pro-Gates, pro-loviest. He has LGBTQ stuff all over the place, including inclusion, diversity, and love, so I question whether or not he's gonna push the agenda of that or whether he's gonna represent Lee County. He's also got COVID masks everywhere because it shows we care. And he's been in his current business of consultant only since August of 2020, and he wants to provide interim leadership for C-suite strategic and operational focuses, and he endorsed Cole Peacock. Let's see, the guy whose last name I can't pronounce, who's with BMJ Consulting and was the former Cape mayor, let's see, oh, wow. He's been involved in land use case incorporation in Benita, and he wants to facilitate the client's agenda. I'd like to know who he thinks the client is, whether it's you guys or whether it's the citizens of Lee County. The irony isn't lost on me at what's going on here. I would like somebody on this board because...
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello. I'll first start by saying I oppose this public meeting at 11:00 a.m. on a weekday for parent input, and the fact that we were forced to stay outside the building, non-masked, for a public input meeting. But I will say, I am actually proud to see you guys in this process of the superintendent and all the different options. I think that this is the, one of the first times I've saw all of you guys have input. Patrica threw out some great ideas and problems with this idea, and you guys didn't insult each other. That part of it, I think, is great. The idea that you guys are wanting to kind of take this slow, find an interim, and make sure you pick the perfect person, I think that's a great idea. I really love the idea of somebody outside education or would otherwise be in the business realm. We talked about the use of some of these spaces and incorporating, I forget the term you guys used, but specific teachers to teach like a mechanic or a welding. You know, a business person comes with relationships and a network that can help facilitate some of these added benefits to the district that are otherwise kind of hard to find, right? You guys still in education, not welding, but a business person, one way or another, knows people in manufacturing, all of these different kind of things, and they can help breed added value to these kids. So I encourage you guys to look outside of the norm and be innovative in your process. You are a large district, and you guys are very equipped to, to take this process. Find the interim, somebody you trust, somebody you guys can agree on, and, you know, do that broad search. Get somebody from somewhere else that's Arizona that's doing revolutionary things with education. Something like that. You guys continue to work. Thank you for the process, and good day.
At this time, will the following individuals please line up? Edwin Vasquez, Chris Quackenbush, Crystal Veray, and Barbara Brandonberg.
Good morning. My name is Christine Divigilli. I just want to thank you guys for, you know, a lot of the, I'm gonna repeat a lot of the things that Cory and Tara said there. You know, I, we do appreciate that you guys are taking the time to, or that you want to take the time to hire the right, the right interim superintendent. I do not believe, though, that you should be hiring someone, that you should use a firm for this. We don't need a consultant firm. I don't believe we need a consultant firm for this. I believe each and every one of you were put on this board and you were put in these positions so that you can make these decisions for us. Now, if this is a matter of you guys just can't get along, well, you teach children how to get along every day. Teach yourselves how to get along and make this decision, make the decision that's best for our community. You know, and if you can't, if you can't straighten out this mess, and if you can't get along and make a decision, well, then maybe we should move for Lee County to go to an elected superintendent rather than you guys having to be put in that position. But I don't think that that's the case. I think you guys are fully capable of doing this. I really think y'all need to stop fighting. I mean, that, that needs to happen now, because you are not being a great example for the rest of, for everyone else, and everyone is watching you now. I don't know if you guys know that. You know, I want to remind, Ms. Vaughn, I want to remind you of something that you said on October 20th during a workshop that I highly encourage parents watch. Parents, watch that workshop. Just watch the October 20th one. Vaughn, you said that it takes a few years for perceptions to change, and you are exactly right. It is going to take a few years for parents' perspectives to change of every single one of you. Don't you think you should start right now? Change our perspective of you now. Show us that you can make good decisions now. You guys can do this, and we would love to be able to support you in that.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Denise Nystrom, and I'm a Lee County resident. I'm also a former Assistant Superintendent of Schools, which means that I worked as a contract employee for the Board of Education. I have been involved in many superintendent hirings, and I will say that when you are hiring a full-time person, it is not unusual to use a consultant to do so. If you are going to hire an interim, initially, then, then a consulting firm may not be necessary. However, what I think is important is that if you hire an interim or a full-time person, that it's somebody that is unbiased, that will represent the ideals of the entire community. The community is not happy at large with the Code of Conduct and all of the gender discussion. It is not happy with the mask mandate, and the next thing I'm sure that we're going to be facing is critical race theory. So what I'm asking is, how will the interview committee be set up, one for the interim and two for a permanent hire? Will there be an equal number of parents on that committee, and perhaps they should be selected through a lottery system so that the committee is not stacked in any way? And on a side note, shy of that, thank you for everything that you do, and if there's any way the technology could be fixed inside of that room so that we could see everybody here, it would really be appreciated.
The following individuals please line up. Edwin Vasquez, Chris Quackenbush, Crystal Veray, Barbara Brandonberg.
Hello, my name is Chris Quackenbush, and I was here the last time you did this job, trying to hire a new superintendent. And though we were talking at the time about finding a consultant and also doing a national search and the various opportunities we had, it ended up that there was a text from the dais during the meeting offering our superintendent, our current superintendent, the job with no interviews, no chance for public inquiry or investigation. He was just hired on the spot. I'm here to make sure that doesn't happen again and that we actually do a professional job of searching for a new superintendent who is qualified, who can carry this job, this important job, through. I'm also here to object to wearing masks at all. There is no state of emergency in the state of Florida any longer, and for this reason, we really shouldn't be here, except for your policy. You seven people decided that for some reason we all have to wear masks, even though there's no emergency in the state any longer with regard to COVID. I object to this, and I think it should be addressed right away. Thirdly, I am concerned about the new policies on gender issues, and I'm also concerned about the poster that is widely used, indicating that anyone should come forward with their sexual preferences, whether they're a teacher or an employee or a student. And this discussion has no place in a public school where our main job is the three Rs. Can we please focus on that for a change? Because our children are really in trouble. They have no knowledge of our history, they're having difficulty in math, our test scores are abysmal, and that should be exactly what you seven are supposed to be doing. Words like passionate, progressive, equity, those are not words for this county. This county is a conservative county. Those words are not conservative, and words make a difference. We should use words that direct ourselves to learning the three Rs, getting our children educated, having discipline that is correct and accurate, and not usurping the role of parents. Thank you very much.
Hello, I'm Crystal Veray. So it's, this is an interesting process, and I'm still new to kind of learning how this whole thing works with a superintendent. But the one thing that I want to ask you guys on the board is, throughout this process, one, if you could just kind of be cognizant of the people that you're representing and the environment that you're also representing. I hate to get political, but we live in a very, I'm gonna say, conservative state. I mean, it's no news that people are against the, the page and the Code of Conduct, the posters, and I'm just asking that the person that you bring in, whether, whether it's permanent or temporary, act in accordance to the values that the people hold and hold them responsible. You guys have the power to hold the person responsible, and it just seems like the decisions are made based on political affiliations, based on special interests, and it's, we're not being representative or represented. So I just ask that when you go through this process, be transparent and keep in mind the values that we hold, important to us, and kind of go in line with those values. Thank you.
Madam Chair, that appears to conclude our public comments.
Okay, thank you. First, I would just like to thank each and every one of you for coming this morning and sharing your, your thoughts and your views with us. We definitely want to make sure that we are taking the time to be thoughtful and to make sure that we are bringing in the appropriate person to continue leading the district in an interim basis while we look for our permanent one. So we will be making sure that we have meetings going forward. I know it was put out on a website, and we will be discussing that a little bit later in the meeting about the website that we have, and we want to make sure that, you know, everybody is engaged in keeping the information out there so that everybody can, can see it. So in saying that, we are gonna go ahead and proceed. So the first order of business is the approval to adopt the time, the timeline and the process. You have heard the recommendation that the board approve to adopt the timeline and process. Is there a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the timeline and process.
Thank you, Ms. Patrica. Do I have a second? Ms. Morgan? Okay, and now discussion. Now, this is pertaining to what we had spoke about, and do, we have the timeline?
It's right here.
Ms. Roman?
It's right here.
It's on the agenda.
Okay. So do we have any questions regarding that, the timeline? Ms. Patrica?
I don't have any questions. I do have a comment, though. I believe that we are in, and I alluded to this before, but I want to be a little bit more, go a little bit more in depth. I believe we're in a really, really beautiful position. We can be deliberative and intentional in the choosing of our interim and then move on to being deliberative and intentional in the choosing of our permanent. And we're in this position because Dr. Atkins has given us sufficient notice. I, I come from the Northeast, where things move very, very, very quickly, and one of the hard things that I had to get used to in moving down here was how slowly things move. Like, I remember calling a little lead coach and not getting a call back for a week, whereas in the East, if you don't call back within 24 hours, it's a bad thing. So I wanna, I like, I think we're in a position where we can do what I call Florida-style, nice and slow and nice and deliberate, and really get the input from the community every step of the way. So I'm, I'm really happy with this timeline, and I will definitely be, be supporting it.
Perfect, thank you. Are there any other? Ms. Gittens?
Well, I'm going to reiterate what I've said since the first meeting. I, I agree with Ms. Patrica to some extent, but I feel that our major task in all of this is to get a superintendent that is qualified, able, capable, and willing to lead this district. And I will repeat again, and I will continue to repeat, it should be simultaneous to anything else that we are doing. I have had quite a bit of experience in my previous jobs, hiring and doing this type of thing, and sat on the superintendent's search committee previously for the district. And the first and main thing, and I've had calls and talked to quite a few people in the community of the same thing, the first thing that we need as the, the foundation is what are we looking for? And that means that we should have sat down, whether it be with a consultant or whatever, looked at the current job description, the current situation we have, evaluate whether we want to make changes to that, where have we been, where are we going, what do we want to see different? And that is the core of whether it's interim or whatever. I, I honestly believe we should have started a long time ago. Just doing that, hiring the, the consultant for the national search, it's going to take a while, and why are we dragging our feet to just start that process? And I've had quite a bit of community input saying the same thing. And I've had quite a bit of community input saying the same thing. We need to get on with it. We seem to be dragging our feet and taking too long. So that's my comment.
Thank you, Ms. Gittens. Ms. Javonelli?
I think Ms. Vaughn had her hand up first.
No, go ahead. Go ahead, please. Thank you.
Okay. So after the workshop meeting we had just recently, you know, I was overwhelmed with a lot of input from the public constituents and the concern over the future of the district. After I spoke with all three of the candidates, and two of the candidates actually said we didn't need a consultant to do our job. And they said, maybe a facilitator, but I really don't think you need a consultant. Because I was frank with them, I didn't think we needed a consultant from the very beginning. I said that a week or so ago. So I want to question, you know, is this exactly what we want to be doing? I mean, I think we need to be devoting our time in hiring a permanent superintendent. I think an interim doesn't need all this processes and so forth. I think we heard what the community was saying, and they just, we have a lot of employees that are concerned for the future, even if it's temporary. They, you know, are concerned what's going to happen in the next six to eight months. And I don't want to leave them uncomfortable. Right now, it's contract time for renewals for all employees, and they're very concerned. You know, so is this the smartest approach, is what I want to, you know, I just want to check the appetite of this district, of the board, and make sure that this is the route we want to take. Because I kind of agree with Ms., I mean, I agree with Ms. Gittens, because I don't think this is a process we need to drag out for the sake of our employees. You know, are we being a little short-sighted? Are we wasting valuable time for actual permanent superintendent? Should we be devoting our time and energy to that national search? I think those are the things that is really valuable right now. It's a critical time of year for our district, for all the renewals, and is this, I have had a lot of people say that the present superintendent should not be making decisions for the future superintendent. I mean, they are very concerned over that, even if it's a temporary situation for that superintendent, that these are decisions that should be made by a superintendent that's in place and acting. I think it's important for the employees to feel comfortable and knowing that we're going to move forward at their best interests, and our students. And I think drawing out this process is going to be very detrimental to the district, and I think that getting someone in place to work with Dr. Atkins now, sooner than later, is more important than dragging out this process that may result in not, a decision not being made until school starts for an interim. Because I'm, it's just the interim. I think the process, I think we have the right idea for the permanent. I think we need to devote our time to that. I don't know, does anybody else on this board have that same mindset or appetite?
I know Mr. Pre, Bruno had her hand up.
No.
Don't?
No, thank you.
Okay. Well, I just want to, go ahead.
Actually, I started out with one or two things to say, and I've just added something from Ms. Javonelli. First of all, we started off looking at the timeline, and I'm going to, as a matter of fact, I sent to everyone yesterday the suggestion, a recommendation from Suzette Rivera, that we were on a really tight turnaround with the paper resumes. So that's one of the things we'll be discussing when we get to that piece in a little bit. Now, looking at the timeline, if we go to the emailed resumes, we've got choose candidates to receive all applications May 21st, which is the date that we put in the ad. And really, the only way at this point to ensure that we have all the applications would be to have those emailed. Now, what the, our board secretaries are going to need to do, and I'm also going to propose that we, instead of, I think it said four o'clock, go to eight or nine AM, they're going to have to prepare a packet for us, they're going to have to print out, and we are going to have to be sure that we come, if we're not in the office, that we make it a point to get that packet. Now, then we're talking about choose candidates to interview, and that would be on a Monday. We get on a Friday, we have the weekend, it would be on a Monday. The other thing that I see as an issue when I talked with the three consultants, all of them had the idea that ahead of all of this, they wanted to sit down with us and talk. And frankly, I think that is a totally unnecessary step. I'm looking at the timeline, since that's what we're supposed to be focused on, and I'm thinking we're a little close on the timelines here. And I'm thinking of the next thing about the consultant, and I don't think we need a consultant. I think if we want to have a completely objective person helping us, that what we need is a facilitator, okay? Frankly, I think all of us know what we're looking for, and you can bet the farm that it's going to be very different. At least two significantly different opinions, I mean, you know, there'll be seven variations on it. But, you know, this board has been split, and it's going to continue to be split, and that's what we're going to have to look on how we can find some commonalities to do a little compromise in that. So knowing the personalities of all of us, A, I'm concerned about this timeline, B, I'm concerned that the consultants, from what I listen to and the questions I asked, are going to be doing stuff that's completely unnecessary. And C, I agree that we need to move this process along, and I don't see any problem once we get it rolling, talking about the timeline, once we get rolling on the interim and, you know, post our ads, well, those ads are posted and we're waiting for resumes, should we not put in our timeline, choose a company to start the ball rolling on selecting a permanent superintendent? So I know I'm kind of wandering in what I say, but I agree with what Ms. Javonelli said about someone who's here temporarily, making a decision for a permanent superintendent. Of course, on the other hand, we don't know what kind of issues, I mean, this year, we've had a tremendous number of issues come up, and legally, our interim is our superintendent. So if we have a devastating hurricane, if we have a new variation, God forbid, of the pandemic, if we have, you know, whatever catastrophe could possibly strike, or not even catastrophe, but issues, I think we do need to have somebody in place that we choose carefully. That said, let's add something into this timeline to say that while we're waiting for the resumes, that we get the ball rolling for the next thing.
And if I may, the dates that we have here, and I know this is what we are speaking on and that we will be taking a vote, it is just for the dates. And, Mr. Pre, Bruno?
So the motion that's on the floor is to approve the timeline and the process for the selection of the interim superintendent. The dates that are viewable on the agenda is the timeline for the process for the interim superintendent. The board has other additional workshops that you'll be intending to be able to select your national search firm and those other things that you need to talk about, but this specifically was just for the interim superintendent. That was the timeline that you had discussed. And if we could take bite-sized morsels, because we don't have a facilitator today, so if we can take bite-sized morsels, motion by motion, remember, these motions will also have public comment, so we need to take that into consideration. And there is a time constraint today because we do have a hard stop at 2:00. So I just want to help the board in just keeping the discussions germane to that motion. The next section will be about the consultant, and we can have, you know, further discussion with regards to the motion on the consultant.
So again, if I may, the dates that we have listed, now that does not mean that we cannot add dates for a later meeting, this is just the dates that we had for the interim. If we decide as a board that we want to have other dates, not included with what we have going on here, but other dates for just that, we can certainly do that. That is available to us at any time. But these dates right here that we're speaking on are the dates that we want to see the process work, and to make sure that we have, you know, the person here at this time. Ms. Fisher, you had your hand up?
Yes, I did. So on the May 3 workshop, I did make some comments regarding both the timeline and the process. And also, I would like for us to entertain Ms. Vaughn's suggestion that we approve, you know, paper email transmissions for applications, and then they can be printed out in-house.
And that'll go when we go to advertisement?
Okay.
When we get down there.
Okay, so then, then I'm just going to reserve my comments regarding the consultant and the rest of the process, because we're saying approval to adopt the timeline and the process. So then, can you please define for me the process? I see the timeline.
Well, when?
Is that just that we're placing the advertisement today, that we're going to receive all applications by the 21st?
Correct.
And then the following Monday, choose candidates, three to five out of however many applicants we may have? Okay, and then have interviews later? Oh, okay.
May I make a suggestion?
As soon as Ms. Fisher is finished?
Well, it has to do with her confusion about the.
But let her finish her train of thought, so that way. Ms. Fisher, please continue. Yeah, I'll just reserve the rest of my comments.
Madam Chair, just for clarification of the motion, the motion was to adopt the process and timeline. However, the motion did not include the word interim in it, but the process that is outlined in the board agenda is solely for the interim. So this is not about the permanent search. This is solely the adoption of the process and timeline for the interim superintendent.
Correct. Thank you. Ms. Fisher, please finish.
Okay. So then, I think I need some clarification on what do we mean by process? Because I thought the process was that we would have the consultant and, you know, that that was the process we were using, in addition to advertising nationally, which I do, with regard to the timeline, I think I do want to comment on that once again. I'll reiterate what I said on May 3, was that I really feel like it is a bit of overkill to advertise nationally, because that is going to be more time-consuming. We are on a tight timeline, and I think I mentioned that on the 3rd. So I really feel like we need to consider looking at our community, like Dr. Santini suggested, and having been alongside Dr. Santini for a few years, and having experienced this historically, we, this district has done better with people who had either residence or vested interest in this community and were familiar with Florida law. Under Florida law, there are specific responsibilities for a superintendent, and the interim, or whatever we're going to call that, he or she, is still the superintendent during that period of time, however short the contract. So I really would like to just mention that for consideration also.
Thank you. And again, it's, the dates are here, is the advertisement place, receiving applicants, the candidates' interviews, all of that. Now, we'll get into the nitty-gritty when we go to the approval of the advertisements, the budget, the consultant, where that goes, who that goes to, all of that will be in later in the other board business.
Thank you. So at this time, I will support the timeline.
Thank you. Ms. Gittens?
Okay, my concern is to vote on a motion that says timeline and process, and process is not definitively stated in here. If I were to vote on this, it would have to say advertisement place, receive applications, and where in this process that we're voting on does it even say the consultant? That piece is missing, and we already discussed the consultant would do this, and the consultant would, you know, meet with each of us, and that is not clear in this. So, and my thing again is that if we're, I know it has to do with the interim, but we need to have somewhere on paper, starting the process of looking for the permanent, and I will not support that.
Mr. Pre, Bruno?
I believe this was Ms. Patrica's motion. Ms. Patrica, I don't know if perhaps, to clarify, the motion could be just to adopt the timeline versus including the process in there?
Thank you for that. Yes, we can engage in this process with or without a consultant. The word interim is in the backup materials. As has been stated repeatedly, the permanent superintendent process will be separate, will be different, is not on the agenda for discussion today. I trust the chair to schedule those meetings in an appropriate way and at an appropriate time. I don't know what more clarification I can provide.
So perhaps withdraw that motion and do a motion just to adopt the timeline, allow the process discussion to take place.
If I may?
The process will take place regardless of whether we have a consultant. The process as stated.
I'm going to get to her in a second. I'm trying. Ms. Morgan?
The process is right here, and as Ms. Patrica just said, it does not mean that there has to be a consultant or a facilitator or anything. This is the process. We are committing to a process for the interim superintendent. Place an advertisement, receive applications, choose candidates to interview, group interviews, choose the interim candidate, appoint. That's the process. The consultant at this point is not even in here. It's a timeline that we commit to as a board to resolve the question of who are we going to hire as an interim superintendent.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Ms. Javonelli?
Okay, so I heard what Mrs. Fisher just said and what Ms. Gittens just said, and I just think we need to, I think we need to move forward, and I think, I spoke to Dr. Atkins, and Dr. Atkins said that he would work with any interim, and I think that opportunity in itself is really a good situation, because if we could have two superintendents for the beginning of school, 22, you know, for at least part of the, through the summer, would be an asset for the district. So I don't want to commit to a consultant, and I'm going to stand firm on that. And regarding the timeline, I think the timeline is irrelevant. I think we just need to pick a superintendent, and I'm prepared today to make a motion to do that.
Mr. Pre, Bruno?
So there is a motion on the floor that needs to be disposed of first. The issue that I'm hearing from the board is the question of process. So some board members are seeing the process as the timeline, some board members are including the consultant, how we're going to advertise, the more nuts and bolts. the consultant, how we're going to advertise the more nuts and bolts as part of the process. To make it clear and cleaner, if we take that process part of it, because you are going to talk about it, and just have a motion to review or accept the timeline, and then from there, you can discuss the nuts and bolts, which I think some board members are looking at it as part of the process.
Ms. Vaughn?
Okay, I honestly think that 1 and 2 are backward. I think we should have decided if we want a consultant and what the role of that consultant would be, because if we accept a consultant, looking at the motion on the floor right now, dates, there would need to be dates in there, because all of us have other things, either in personal lives or in definitely, in board-related matters, that we also have to schedule. So, would that person, would the board say that person needs to meet with each of us? So, that's why I think 1 and 2 are backward. I would decide first if we want a consultant. Secondly, if that's what the board votes, would that be a consultant that does miniscule things, like meet with all of us and things that I consider personally unnecessary? But regardless, if that's what the board votes, that needs to be part of the timeline. So that's how I feel. That's where I see a problem with that, and since it's been judged that we can't say, all right, so advertisement placed, and then insert in there, while we're waiting two weeks to get those applications, we start finding the firm to do the national search, I'm going to announce that I'm going to propose for good of the order at the end, that we set a date.
And that's...
To find that, because I think if we don't tick-tock, another couple weeks goes by, and we're that much farther behind in our search. So that's how I feel about it, and my notice that I am going to say, for good of the order, I'm going to insert that as a motion, make a motion at the end.
Ms. Dupree Bruno? Because we, this is, and the, when we get to consultant, the consultant is not, is like to lead, to facilitate us, like right now, it's, we are just speaking on a calendar that we had to put out there to hold dates, so that way we could get the work done. And so this is what we had, the conversation a couple days ago, we sat here and we went through all of this, so that way we could speak, we could come in and speak more about it today, and then take a vote on this. So whatever the board wishes is, it's fine.
I think, Madam Chair, you can ask to see if the board wants to go ahead and move forward with a vote on this, or perhaps a board member wants to do a motion to lay this particular question on the table until you've had an opportunity to review the rest of the materials on the agenda. It's up to the board.
Call the question.
The question has been called at this point, Madam Chair, so it's time for a vote.
Okay.
I'd like to lay it on the table, and I'd like to wait, so...
Well, the call for question has been made first, so we have...
I had my hand raised, and she spoke up and didn't even do it that way. I had my hand raised to say that, so I don't think that it works that way, if we're going to be respectful of the table.
Madam Chair, I don't know which one that you called on or recognized first on the floor.
I had not recognized anyone at that time.
So at this point, you need to recognize somebody.
Let me have Ms. Chivinelli finish what you're saying, then Ms. Gittens, and then we'll finish with that, please.
I'd like to table this until we can have a conversation and see where everybody's at. I'm not getting that, we're all over the place again, so, and I would like to table it. I don't think that, I'm not going to support a consultant, so, I mean...
But we're not, this is regarding the timeline.
At this point, Madam Chair, there's been a motion to lay the question on the table. Is there a second to that motion?
May I ask a question? If there's a second in all of that, is there a discussion?
Yes.
No, there is no discussion on this motion. You would just go straight to a vote. Is there a second on this motion? If there's no second, then the motion dies, you go back to your original...
Ms. Patrica?
Call the question.
At this time, there's been a call for question for the vote.
Thank you. So, could I, well, are we able to vote online?
We should be able to.
Okay. So the question was called, and we will now record your votes. There's no other comments, is that correct?
No, not at this point.
I'm to vote. Well, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Prior to you voting, the public has an opportunity to make public comment if they want to.
Right.
Why, may I?
Yes.
Why is that if it was an advertised part of the agenda?
Because it's a... You're correct. I'm sorry, Ms. Patrica, you're correct. Yeah, because this was part of the agenda. I apologize for that, sorry about that. Yes, so we can call for the vote.
Okay, so if you will, then please record your vote to approve the timeline.
Madam Chair, motion carries 4-3.
Thank you. Okay, so the next on the agenda is the approval of the consultant. May I have, let's see, you have heard the recommendations that the board approve the consultant to facilitate the interim superintendent hiring process. Is there a motion to approve? Ms. Patrica?
I move that we approve the hiring of a consultant to facilitate the interim superintendent hiring process.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Ms. Morgan? Thank you. Now, discussion. Who would like to begin? Ms. Gittens?
Well, I'll start and say what I've said for the last two, three weeks. We do not need it. I, just like one of the speakers spoke earlier, and I said at a previous meeting, I do believe that we are capable of reading the questions and the rubric and selecting an interim. I, and if, when I spoke with each one of the consultants, I began the conversation with, just let me let you know in the beginning, I don't feel that this is necessary. I think it's not something that we need to do. And again, we need to be focusing on that long-term piece. It's going to take longer if we keep pushing it under the table and saying, we'll get to it, we'll get to it. Our major focus is to make sure that this community starts off the school year or close to it with a permanent superintendent. I believe that this is not feasible, not necessary at this time, and in speaking to several of the consultants, they agree. And I know I'm going to lose this vote as well, so my only thing is, when you do go ahead and pass the consultants, the only thing I think they should do is to be able to facilitate when we're doing the interviews. I don't need someone to come in and tell me, you know, which application that I read is the best one. All I need them to do is to sit there and facilitate, not give input and not help with that decision. That's not their job, it's ours.
And I believe that is what we were looking at...
No, it wasn't, because they, no, they were going to meet with us and help us with questions, and help us go through the process, and I spoke with each one of them, and that's what they, we're under the impression they were doing.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, I think the question is whether we want a facilitator. You know, we don't have to accept their work plan. What we need to agree to is the need for a facilitator. Once we have the facilitator, or before, it's our responsibility to say, what is the work plan? Just because they said that that was what they were offering to do, doesn't mean that that's what we're hiring them to do. So, well, anyway, that's... I would like to know, though. Ms. Gittens, you said we need to have one, a permanent superintendent in place by August 15.
No, I did not say that.
You said by the start of school, right?
Okay, when you finish, I'll tell you what was in my head.
Okay, I heard you say we needed a superintendent in place by the start of school, which I take to be approximately August 15. So, that leaves us exactly, June, July, three months to do a national search, which I think is impossible.
Okay, and you didn't listen to the rest of my conversation? May I please respond?
Madam Chair, just remember, board members to go through the chair. I'm not saying you can't respond, Ms. Gittens, I'm just saying, everybody, please remember to go through the chair.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Gittens.
My comment, if you roll back the tape, was it would be nice to start the school year, although I know that that is probably not probable, but the longer we wait, the longer into the school year it gets. I understand that it's going to take a while. I've talked to quite a few people in different districts that have gone through this and their timeline, and it's, many times it's longer than six to nine months. My point is, we need to begin. We need to pull the trigger and start the process and start the time clock. So, again, and when you, when you were saying, all we wanted them for was to facilitate, well, that wasn't the conversation the other day. And when we were talking about their, what we were looking for and all that, that was not the conversation. So, we need to be very clear on things that we're putting forth as a motion for us to vote on, because if it's not clear, I am not going to vote in a positive on it. And it's not clear here that it says as facilitator. And my concern is that voting positively on this, and a few weeks later, you have a long, drawn-out process, and you say, but you voted on it on May the 7. So I am very concerned about that if it's not specifically stated in the motion.
Ms. Morgan? I'm sorry, I'll come right back to you.
I'll pass for now.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Patrica?
If I may, through the chair, my motion was to hire a consultant to facilitate the interim superintendent hiring process. I'm not sure what room there is in that motion. If you'd like me to clarify, I will, but I don't know how to make that more clear.
And on our, the notes, it does say that we, that they will help to facilitate, help facilitate, what we had asked for, the scope of work, individual meeting with board members. So, you all had made that statement, because it's, that's why it's written on here, to determine perspectives. Help facilitate a review of the interview questions, that's if needed. Help facilitate a review of the rubric. Facilitator help with the interview process. Working with the district staff, facilitating the hiring process, which was said, bless you, absolutely has to happen, because they have to work, we have to work with the district staff.
Yeah.
Bless again.
Thank you.
And, so, I mean, it's on here, what we had spoke about. Do we, are there any other, Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, in light of some of the comments that have been made about the regular, the search for the permanent superintendent, there's no, you have said that you're perfectly prepared, once we get through this, in terms of today, to start scheduling time for the regular search. So I guess what I'm asking, you as chair, if we, the board, direct you to start putting together an agenda for the regular search immediately, will you do that?
Yes.
Can we go back to the interim, please?
So, are there any other comments regarding the presenters, I'm sorry, the consultant to facilitate the interim superintendent hiring process? And then, of course, we're going to have to have the conversation, we have three applicants, if you will, who were, after asking multiple, multiple people, we did receive the one, Mr. Cashman, at the last meeting. I went ahead directly after that meeting that we had, and was asked of me to reach out to this person, have them send us what they are, if they were interested in this, or if they would be a part, a party to this, and we did get his information, he did send out the information to, all the information had been sent out to all of us. I believe that each and every one of them, with the help of our administrative assistants, contacted each one of them, so that they would be able to have conversations. So I think that all of you had an opportunity to speak with each one of them. If you have not, I'm not sure of that, but I believe that it was set up for everybody to do that. So...
Madam Chair?
Yes?
So right now, the motion that's on the floor is the motion to hire a consultant to facilitate the interim superintendent's search, so that's probably the first question. And then you can go to the next question, is within the candidates that you have, is there someone there that you would like to hire?
Perfect, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Dupree Bruno. So, do we, are there any other questions regarding the hiring of a person to facilitate? Ms. Gittens, before we call the question.
I believe that we're backwards on this, as Ms. Vaughn was saying before. We should be talking about the consultant agreement first, to see what it is we're looking for, before we make a decision on, we want this person to do it. And in regards to your comments about, that we discussed that they would just facilitate, when you look at the consult, consultant agreement, it does say facilitate the hiring process. And to me, that is not selective in saying the interview process or whatever, and all the things that you mentioned, in talking with staff, and talking with us, and fixing the questions, and all of that, I just, I don't think that that's all necessary. And again, the way it's worded, all of that is included.
I'm going to go to, I'll come right back to you, Ms. Vaughn. Ms. Chivinelli?
Okay, you know, as board members were, are, we are the oversight, the district, of the district, important things that we have to do, we adopt policies, hire superintendent, board attorney, and the auditor, we all know that, that's part of our statutory duties. And we all know that, because we were elected to do that. And, you know, as I look at this process, I think it's, I have significant concerns, this has turned into painstakingly unnecessary process that makes it appear incompetent, us incompetent. So, we've been provided training by FSBA on what we should be doing, and that's part of our job. And, you know, I have to speak up about this, because I think this is just a total unnecessary process. I don't think we need a consultant. I think we need to quit dragging this out, or just going down a rabbit hole for the interim. And in the meantime, that leaves, the whole staff thinks that our district is up in jeopardy, and I think that we need stability. We need a new set of eyes, I think we need to bring a balance to the district, and I think we need to do it while we have the superintendent still here to work with an interim superintendent. We need to experience someone experienced with a track record, and someone to stabilize the district for the sake of our students and our staff, and I'm going to, I don't think we need a consultant, and I'm not, I'm not going to support that today, because the consultants even said that to me. So I'm going to stick with their recommendation.
And maybe it's the word consultant that is really...
Maybe.
Confusing, just like process is confusing. So maybe we need to bring it down a notch. Ms. Vaughn?
Okay, a couple things I just wanted to clarify. I understand from the discussion that we're voting right now on just yes or no to hire a consultant. I think one of the issues is the verbiage here. It says approval of the consultant instead of a consultant, and then, of course, we have names, we have specifics below... We have specifics below. So, that's misleading to me. And then, approval of consultant agreement is what we're going to be talking about next. And I'm assuming there that part of it is just, you know, we had fees, that we were told, different, different ways that we would pay each individual consultant and his company. And so, I'm assuming that's what we're going to do, and I'm going back to what Mrs. Morgan said, in that, once we have a consultant, that it doesn't matter what that consultant envisioned, like meet with all of us, which would include seven hours on, on the clock for him, and an hour at least apiece for us, that we would work out the scope of work. Of course, then that can be another 30-minute debate of what the scope of work is. So, I just want to clarify, are we, for this motion, approving a consultant without any look at who that might be? That's my understanding.
Mr. Dupree Bruno?
So, the motion that's on the floor is a motion to hire a consultant to facilitate in the hiring of the interim superintendent. That's the motion that's on the floor.
Okay. I just want it to be clear, because where it says approval of the consultant under board business, to me, that's the verbiage.
And then, Ms. Dupree Bruno, could you also share, and I apologize, I will come back. When we were, we were trying to break all these down, so that it, it was breaking it apart, so it wasn't all pulled together, so we could have separate conversations about that. So, that's why we have all these items. So, and I do understand what you're saying, the, a, so, thank you for that, Ms. Vaughn. Ms. Fisher, and then Ms. Patrica?
I wanted to clarify the motion, if you may?
Oh, please.
Because I made the motion. I did say a consultant. This is specifically just to agree that a consultant is needed to facilitate, and then the, the next part of the question will be addressed in the next motion.
Thank you. That's how I understood it. Dupree Bruno?
So, you have three steps in this discussion. The first step is with regards to whether or not you're even going to hire someone to help you facilitate. The second step is who, you have all of the information there in terms of how much, et cetera. And then, you can talk about the specifics in terms of the agreement, because there can be some negotiations back and forth.
Thank you. Ms. Fisher?
I just want to make one qualifying comment. If the majority of the board believes that it's necessary for us to hire a consultant to facilitate our, our, our hiring process of the interim, I'll support it. But I do, I do not think it's necessary, and I understand that the reason we're at this point is because there was a reluctance for us to work with our staff people to help with that facilitation, which we have many qualified people who could help us with that. So, I just wanted to make that qualifying statement, but, yeah.
Thank you for that.
I will support that. If the majority wants to have a consultant be the facilitator, yes. And that was what you said, right? Okay.
Thank you for that clarification. That is exactly correct. So, are there, Ms. Gittens?
Well, I, I just wanted to make, at the last meeting, I was the one that brought up not having a consultant and just having staff to help us through the process. And if a consultant were, were to be involved, it would be to sit in a chair or a seat here to facilitate the meeting where we are discussing and interviewing, and that's all. I am, I do not, there's still too much involved here for me with the consultant. I agree, staff can help us get the questions, the rubric. We receive the applications. That's our job, and we know how to do that. The thing that we have difficulty with would be just having someone outside facilitate the meetings where we are interviewing the, the applicants. That's it.
And I believe, Ms. Patrica?
I, I just wanted to comment on, on the reasons why I believe we, we need a consultant. So, we have, it is 12:12. We have not made it through two items on the agenda. On the C1, I had to bite my tongue a million times to not say point of order, to get us back onto the subject that we were supposed to be discussing at that time. That puts me, as an individual board member, in an adversarial position with my fellow teammates in terms of the discussion that's taking place. And if we were to utilize staff for that, that would put a staff member in a, in adversarial position. I believe that an outside, independent person can, again, put those guardrails in place and make sure that we are moving forward in the discussion and moving forward in the decision-making process. And, and that is why I believe a consultant is so important.
So, is, are there any other?
Madam Chair, may I ask Ms. Patrica a question?
Yes.
How, how would staff providing us with documentation put them in an adversarial position?
That was not what I said. Ms. Gittens?
Okay. That's, that's why I asked the question.
Thank you.
The facilitation of discussion puts me in an adversarial position. If I call point of order on you or on Ms. Morgan, it, it's, this, this process can be fun. This process can be something this entire community gets behind, and it can be a fun, fun process, if we're staying on task. And, and I fear that, up to this point, we have not shown the ability, as a team, to stay on task, and an outside facilitator will allow us to do that, without any one of us having to be in disagreeing with the other. I really believe that a seven thumb sideways on every single question in front of us can be achieved with outside assistance.
All right. Well, at this point, if, if there are any other questions, I will go ahead and call the question regarding, for the votes, regarding hiring a, sorry, I need my glasses on. The hiring of a consultant to facilitate the interim superintendent hiring process. So, would you please record your votes? Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. The next on the agenda, you have heard the recommendation of the board, approve the consultant agreement to facilitate the interim superintendent hiring process as discussed. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve the hiring, the consultant agreement.
Thank you. Does I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. And now, discussion.
Now, now, board members, because you have three different possibilities, this is the opportunity to discuss those three different possibilities.
So, I guess what, I will ask then, if there is anyone who has a recommend, after having the opportunity to speak to all of them, is there anyone that stood out to you that you would recommend?
Madam Chair? I have a question about the process.
Sure. Please.
The question is, again, we are voting on a motion that reads approval of the consultant agreement to facilitate interim superintendent hiring process. And again, that is, that is it all or nothing, or at all? That is confusing. I believe we're putting the cart before the horse to choose someone before we know what it is we need them to do. If these are the people that, I mean, we need to know specifically in order to be able to say this one or that one.
Thank you. Mr. Dupree Bruno?
So, at the, one of your workshops, you went through the particular scope of work, of what you wanted from those particular individuals. I don't have that in front of me, but I do know that you did that. And if you want to change that or add to it, you're able to do that, because there will be some negotiations between those individuals and the board.
May I please respond?
Please, Ms. Gittens.
When a motion like this is put on, we should have that information here, to be able to read it and go to, click on it, and it will say, this is the recommended action, and the statements that we discussed. It's very vague.
Thank you. Could, Ms. Lizak, could you pull that up, maybe? The scope of work, which was from the May 4 workshop? The notes, and it'll say consultant, and then there's the names, and then on, they're in, you have lines, and then you have the notes that we took, and the consensus that were made. Ms. Fisher?
So, then, I thought that in the previous approved, we approved hiring a consultant to facilitate. Would you repeat your?
Yes. Facilitate.
Yes. So, I think we clarified that.
Yes, we have.
So, now, I think that we need to create that, that, and, and offer that agreement to whoever we think would be the best choice to do that.
Correct. And when we sent the, the consultants, the facilit, I'm going to call them facilitators. So, we sent the facilitators, the, the scope of work that we had spoke about at our meeting, so they would be able to understand what we were looking for, as well as the timeline, so that way, they would be available on those dates as well. So, that was sent to them, because we definitely want to know that they would be available if needed. You need to, yep, it starts there. So, up on the screen, you know, you're on the, have to come down. Okay. So, this is what, the conversation that took place on May 4, and this was all sent out to all of you as well. So, these are what we sat here and discussed, and the consensus. So, if you, if you need a minute to look at that, and then that way, as Ms. Gittens said, you can have that to look at, as well as this. Ms. Patrica?
If I could say, I believe that the facilitation is the key here. As we look at the review of the interview questions, will be at a public meeting, and that will require facilitation. The review of the rubric will be at a public meeting, and that will require facilitation. The interview process will be at a public meeting, that will require facilitation. So, I just, I just want to create clarity around the duties that are stated up there. I believe that individual meetings with each board member will be helpful, because it will allow the facilitator to understand each board member's personality and each board member's desire with regard to the outcome. And I don't mean an individual person. I mean desire with regard to the outcome. But I can certainly, I'm hearing resistance to those individual meetings. I can certainly live with it, if my colleagues don't want to hire somebody to do that piece. But I believe that the last three bullet items are exactly in line with the motion that I made previously.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Jivinelli?
Can, can I ask the board attorney to read the statute for the powers and duties of school board members? Yeah, our powers and duties.
Mm-hmm. There, there are three specific statutes. Is there something in particular that...
To stay focused on what we're doing.
So, this is, this is one of the statutes that discusses the powers and duties of the school board, Florida Statute 1001.42.
I can't...
Can you hear me now? I'm sorry. This is one of the statutes that discusses the powers and duties of the school board, 1001.42. And it's, it's a very long statute, so I will give you the subheadings. One is the requirement that minutes and records be kept, to control property, adopt school programs, establish, organize in the operation of schools. There are some language in here with regards to personnel, in terms of designating positions to be filled, and prescribe the qualifications for those positions, and provide for the appointment, compensation, promotion, suspension, and dismissal of employees. Adopt policies with regards to the standards of ethical conduct for instructional personnel, administrative personnel, and school officers. And disqualify from employment instructional personnel and administrative personnel, as defined by additional statutes. Provide for the proper accounting for all students. Provide for the adequate instructional materials for all students.
Did you just read the part about the hiring now, of the superintendent?
What number is that, Ms. Jivinelli?
1001.42.
Yep. But what number is it? Is it 13, 15, 16?
I didn't write that down, and I, and I didn't print it.
Because I'm on that, and I don't see that specifically.
And a superintendent, I think, I mean, it's just our responsibility. I don't want to give my power over to a consultant. That's really what I want to say. Thank you.
Point of order, we have decided, as a board, to hire a consultant. Could we please keep the conversation on topic?
I mean, this jurisdiction has the board as hiring the superintendent. We're not a jurisdiction that elects our superintendent.
Correct. And...
Yeah, it's my responsibility.
Correct.
That's all I want to make a statement. That's my responsibility, and I'm not going to give it to anybody else. Thank you.
Right. And we certainly do not want to be given, right, that is our job, so we will, all seven of us will be making that decision to do that. Is there any other, if I can go back to, is there a, a name of one of these that just jumped? Ms. Vaughn, please?
Yeah. To expedite this, just an idea or a suggestion, if we could just, to expedite, go down and ask each board member...
If they have...
You know, either any of the three, or name a person, and maybe we can, just from hearing that, at least eliminate one person, if, if there seems like, you know...
Perfect.
Because that's really what we're, if, if that...
And that's what I was trying to do, without going to each person, so, but that's a great idea, I will certainly do that. Ms. Vaughn?
Um...
Start with you.
My first choice would be Cashman.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I ask, can we go around and do a thumbs up sideways or down on that? And then, we will, as a board and as a body, know where everybody stands?
Well, I, I think that if we can get everybody's, at least their first name, I mean, who they believe should be, then we could, like, if no one picks...
I don't have a first name. I just want something that everybody can agree with.
Yeah.
So, if, so if we can do this, then I'll know where the agreement is, and that's what I will support.
Oh, you're saying, just, okay, based on, okay, so, instead of each one of them. Okay, so what, okay, so, we're going to go down the list. So, Mr. Cashman, his name has just been presented. Do we have yes, no, maybe? And this is not what their duties will be, or what we're wanting them to do, because we're going to direct them on what we want them to do. So, this is just saying, do we want them to be that individual person to help facilitate the process?
And just to be clear, this is not a formal vote. You're just trying to get the consensus in terms of where the board is right now on these three individuals.
Yes, exactly. Thank you.
So, we're, we're changing how we initially said, to go with what Ms. Patrica said?
No, but...
Sounds that way.
Well, we could, I mean, we can go... Well, we could, I mean, we can go down, and everybody can give a name, but that's still gonna, we're still gonna have to come back and fi, figure out, do we all agree upon that person? So to expedite this, we could, you know, we have three names. Do we, whoever has the most votes definitely will be considered.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I think, based on the conversation that I'm hearing, perhaps just trying to see where the board is in terms of these individuals, cause you may not need to have the consensus on all three. So maybe just having everyone say, tell me what's your first choice, what's your second choice? Go down the line, and then come back and do the consensus on those two top candidates.
Ms. Vaughn, your first one is, is Mr. Cashman. Thank you. Your second one would be?
Uh, Peacock.
Okay. Ms. Gittens?
Well, for the record, I need to say that I feel forced into this process that I do not agree with. So I just want that out there. And since I am forced to make a decision, I do not want to just lose my total vote. So I would go with Mr. Cashman. But let me say as well, when I spoke with each one of them and about the things that we had discussed, there were different interpretations by them of what these items meant. And so that's why I think it's confusing if we don't have it concrete. We, it, this process and the way it's written, it's not specific enough.
So, Madam Chair, once the board goes through this process, gives the two, and you guys have a consensus, at that point, you would instruct me in terms of what to negotiate with the, the facilitator.
Correct, so we will have that control over what we want them to do or not to do. So that, and that's gonna be based on, we make that decision, they're not making that decision for us.
But you told me we've already, you and Ms. Patrica already said we've already decided that, and it's already voted on, so.
Ms. Gittens?
My, my choice is Mr. Cashman at this point, thank you.
Thank you, and actually, the only thing that was discussed was the fact that on May 4th, we, as a board, we, all of us, had a conversation regarding the duties of what we, we, again, it's not an I, it's a we, would like to see in a facilitator. If we were to have one, what we would like. In saying that, there does not, there, we're not prohibited from changing whatever that looks like. So, I mean, we have that opportunity to do that, and we will, I'm sure, do that. Ms. Fisher?
Well, I was just gonna say, point of order, can we continue this?
Yes.
What we're doing now, okay. Yeah, I would, I would also select Mr. Cashman, based on his resume and my conversation with him.
And then a second?
Ms. Zirkowitz.
Oh, Ms. Morgan, I'm sorry. I don't know.
No, no, that's okay.
I went right past you.
I have no one, two, three, I mean, I, I am prepared to go with whomever the board selects. I, I.
I'm with you there. Ms. Patrica?
For me, one and two are tied. It would be Mr. Cashman and Mr. Ms. Zirkowitz, and again, I can live with either.
Ms. Jivinelli?
I'm at the will of the board. I don't have a particular one.
And I as well. Ms., um.
So at this point.
Madam Chair, you didn't ask for my second.
I'm sorry?
You did not ask me for a second.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you said you did not want to give. I apologize.
No.
Who would you like for your second?
Mr. Cashman, and then Mr. Peacock.
Thank you.
So, Madam Chair, at this point, it appears that you have one candidate that the board can pretty much live with, perhaps doing the consensus just to verify that. It appears that Mr. Cashman.
Okay.
Seems to be a top choice.
Well, yes, it does appear that way. So could we, Ms. Patrica, you had a question?
I'm gonna make a motion to amend the hiring of Mr. Cashman as the consultant to facilitate the interim superintendent hiring process. Let's move things along.
Ms. Vaughn?
I second that motion.
So, just to be clear, Ms. Patrica, your motion is to?
Hire Mr. Cashman as the consultant to facilitate the interim superintendent hiring process.
And this was an amendment to the motion that was already on the floor. So at this point, there's a second to that motion. Let's go ahead and vote on that amendment. I don't know if there's any discussion.
Is there any discussion regarding that, Ms. Jivinelli?
So, I brought this up the other day, and I just wanna bring it back up again. So, Mr. Cashman is the most expensive. Mr. Peacock offered his services for free. And Mr. Ms. Zirkowitz offered his services at a cost, but he would give it all back to the foundation. So, is this what we really wanna do as a board? Pay for, pay for a facilitator that we have, our own staff that we could work with, could do the same job? I just wanna make sure that we're transparent on this, and that that's what people, this board wants to do.
Thank you for bringing that up. Ms. Vaughn?
Listening to the public comment earlier, there were a couple speakers that seemed to feel like whoever we chose for this would be influencing us, or telling us, or, and the reason that I chose Mr. Cashman was that I felt, given our conversation, given his background, and his, just our conversation and his background, I felt that he would be the most objective of the three candidates. I mean, any of the three would, you know, certainly have the background and experience that they could help us, but despite the cost, I felt most comfortable with him just in the whole conversation. And, and so, when you look at some of the things, honestly, that we have said we're gonna spend a lot of money on, I think especially if we eliminate those individual meetings, it really is a negligible amount that we would be spending on that. But he was the one I was most comfortable with of all three.
Thank you. Do, any other comments?
Like this, so, is there another comment? Okay.
Just for, for the same reasons that Ms. Vaughn said, if we are to choose one, I think the most fair and objective would be Mr. Cashman.
Thank you, Ms. Gittens. Okay, if we could then take a.
You're gonna have to do a hand vote, and the motion right now is to amend, basically substituting the word consultant to Cashman. That is the amendment.
Correct. So if we could, Ms. Patrica, would you please repeat your?
Aye.
Motion, and then that way we can get a vote.
Make a motion to amend, to approve Mr. Hoffman as the consultant.
As.
Cashman, see, I'm bad with names. Mr. Cashman as the consultant to facilitate the interim superintendent hiring process.
Okay, so now we need a hand vote on that. So if we could please have a hand vote. Oh, it has to be up or down? I guess I'll agree.
Does she get to, is there a public comment?
No, there's, there's no public comment, because this, this, no, this item was already on the agenda. There is no public comment at this time, ma'am. There's no public comment. This was already on the agenda, and all of the individuals and the backup materials was available to the public, and the public did have an opportunity to speak on any of the individuals that were on the agenda. And I do believe some individuals actually did speak about those potential individuals. So there is no public comment at this time. You're out of order. You're out of order, ma'am. You're out of order. Thank you. At this time, board, you have voted seven to zero to make the amendment to the motion that was on the floor. Now you vote on that amendment as amended.
And do we comment on that?
Yes, you can comment on that if you want to. So, Ms. Patrica, since this was your motion, if you can please state the motion as amended, and then we can move forward.
Okay, so, the, the motion as amended is to hire Mr. Cashman as the consultant to facilitate the interim superintendent hiring process. What I'd like to suggest is that we give the board chair the ability, authorization to change the scope of work, to exclude the one-on-one meetings, because that seems to be the appetite of the board, but to continue to include the, the facilitation items that were in, in that scope of work.
Okay, so, Ms. Patrica, hold that thought for a second, because we're going to then talk about the agreement itself, and the scope of work, and all of those things that's within the agreement. Let's go ahead and take the vote on Mr. Cashman, and then from there, we can talk about the agreement.
Isn't, isn't it all part and parcel? If I look at C3, it's the actual agreement that we're approving. And if the agreement is as stated by Mr. Cashman in the attachment, that includes one-on-one meetings, so.
Talk about it, I just don't wanna confuse the discussion with regards to the motion that's on the floor right now. But certainly, we can discuss it, but let's, bite size, bite size. So if we can just have a, the formal vote, because there was an amendment, you need to have the formal vote on that motion, and then you can talk about what Ms. Patrica was talking about in terms of the scope of work and those types of things.
I thought we did.
No, we, we just, the only thing we just voted on was to change the amendment, to amend it. That was what the vote was for.
So remember, board members, per Roberts.
No, we voted on the, the amendment, we changed the verbiage.
Roberts rules, always remember, you can amend a motion, which was done, where you substituted the word consultant for Cashman. Now you need to vote on that motion, to formally adopt that motion.
So may I ask, will, will we then have to add an agenda item between three and four in order to approve the agreement?
No, cause this is all part of the discussion. It is all part of the discussion. You're going to be looking at the agreement as well, and then I'm, I'm assuming that you're gonna maybe want to negotiate with him. I, it's up to the board as to how to wanna proceed at that point, with, specifically with regard to the agreement. I think that's where you were getting to, Ms. Patrica.
Okay.
Ms. Chair, Madam Chair.
This right, right here is all we're doing. Go ahead, Ms. Gittens, I'm sorry.
I would like to make a motion that what we are voting on is the approval of Mr. Cashman and the, uh, his scope of, the scope of work that is in, uh, item C3.
Point of order, you can't make a motion while there's a motion already on the table.
Oh, I thought we just did that anyway, okay.
Okay, so, thank you, Ms. Gittens. We are, we have the motion on the table, is to move forward with Mr. Cashman. So we already did the amendment. Now this motion right here, that was just brought up by Ms. Patrica, was to accept, to approve the, now we're doing the approval of the consultant. This is what we're all right now. So, but do we have any conversation regarding that? Does anybody have any conversations? So if there's no conversation on that, then.
I really need five minutes with the attorney, please.
Point of order, Madam Chair, not during the middle of a meeting, I don't think that that's appropriate.
I've been advised by the attorney that if I have.
Mr. Pre Bruno? Mr. Pre Bruno?
And it should be something we all hear.
I agree with that, actually.
Point of order.
Can I please have?
We need to not argue at this table, we need to.
I'm not arguing, Madam, I'm just making.
Ms. Gittens?
So let's go back to where this, where we kind of fell off the rails here. You have now the motion that's pending, which is the formal motion to hire Mr. Cashman as your consultant. Ms. Patrica wanted to allow or ask, I think, to take out one part of that scope of work. If I, if I'm understanding correctly, Ms. Patrica, that's what you wanted to do. We can do that. The request was, let's go ahead and make that formal vote, so we can finish with regards to that, and then we can discuss the, the scope of work for Mr. Cashman. If you wanna do it all together, it's to the board's discretion if you wanna do it. But I think sometimes with the board, if we do bite size, bite size, it's better. That's what I was trying to accomplish.
And I agree with you, but we can't, we can't discuss the agreement without a separate motion.
Yes, you're gonna have, you're gonna have to.
You'll have to make a motion to go in between items three and four.
Well, I'm seeing it as part of the whole discussion as to the agreement and the consultant.
I understand that, but we can't discuss the details of the agreement without a motion. This is an action meeting.
I agree with you. You do need to have a motion, I agree with you.
Okay, Mr. Pre Bruno? Okay, we have this conversation back and forth. We need to, we have a motion on the table, okay? So we need a second of that motion, so that way we can have discussion on this. Correct?
Yes.
So at that time, during that discussion, we could then speak on what needs, needs or wants, or what we don't like, what we do like, at that particular time?
Yes, as part of the discussion.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that's understood. So that conversation will happen. So we have a motion on the floor, do we have a second for the motion?
I'll second it.
Can you please repeat the motion? Which motion are we, I'm sorry, with the back and forth.
You're fine, you're fine. Ms., um, Ms. Patrica, please restate your motion.
Approval to hire Mr. Cashman as the consultant to facilitate the interim superintendent hiring process.
Thank you, and then second it by?
It was actually an amendment that was seconded and voted on.
That's what I thought.
Per Roberts rules, you vote on the amendment, then you go back and you vote on the main motion as amended.
Correct, so we're re, we're voting on the amended form now.
The amended motion.
Correct, so we still need a second.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn, and then we have discussion, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I, I'm not sure why it's, that's what I keep repeating.
I called the question because we've really all, already talked about Mr. Cashman.
So, in saying that, is there anyone, you're calling the question? And no one else has any? So let's go ahead and take a vote on that, please? Is that a hand vote, or do we need? Hand vote?
Are we voting again for Mr. Cashman? Is that all we're doing?
This is, yes, we're redoing it.
For the third time.
Okay, yes. Thank you, seven zero. Okay, so next we have on this, on the agenda, you have heard the recommendations that the board approves the advertisement documents.
Well, now you have an issue.
The agreement.
Oh, jeez.
Cause now you have the question in terms of what you want in the scope and the agreement.
Oh, I see what we did, okay. Okay, so you have heard the recommendations of the board to approve Mr. Cashman.
Consultant agreement.
The consultant agreement to facilitate the interim superintendent hiring process as discussed. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Thank you. Second, Ms. Morgan, thank you, and discussion. Ms. Gittens?
Yes, I would like to see definitive items in this, and if you're going to take what we talked about the other day and add this, then fine, but I, I need to see a definition of what you mean by facilitate. Facilitate was sprinkled all through there, but it is not defined.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes, and in regard and in response to Ms. Gittens' request, I believe this would have to be negotiated with Mr. Cashman.
Yes, but we have to start, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, may I? We have to start somewhere to give him something to negotiate. We have to start somewhere to give him something to negotiate. We don't just go to him and say, what do you want to do?
No, we tell him what we need him to do.
Exactly, and I'm asking to put that in here. That's all I'm asking.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So everybody sees, we have it before us, in front of us as well, what is, what he has written down for the scope of work. So you're wanting the word facilitate. What is it that you want that word to? The meaning of what facilitate means?
No, we talked about facilitating with staff, facilitating with the applicants, facilitating with us, facilitating the meetings. I just think we need to have it clear and I am not in agreement that we just leave it to the chair to make the decision. We're a governance team that we should make a decision as to how that should read.
I am not, I don't want that on me.
I'm just going on what Ms. Patrica had said.
Yes, I don't want that on me. I want, you know, all of you to look at what the scope of work is, which we have, and if there's something that needs to be added or changed, then we would have Mr. Dupree Bruno negotiate with them on our behalf. On our behalf, not my behalf, ours. Ms. Fisher?
Yes, so the scope of work is what we need and we already have our rubrics and all of that, which I understand was provided to Ms. Vaughn by HR? Or, or not, not for this? Okay, so the facilitation is to make the process easier. And so once we decide which of these things we want him to help us negotiate or navigate, then we can present, have Ms. Dupree Bruno present that to Mr. Cashman. When looking at this, I mean, it's meet individually with each board member. I understand that there was some reluctance about that and Ms. Patrica already said, let's leave that out. So then we already agreed that we would like someone to help with the review of interview questions based on the board interviews along with the interviews as directed by the board members and then facilitate the review of the interview rubric. And so if we have edits or suggestions or changes to any of that, we can decide that now and then Ms. Dupree Bruno can negotiate that with Mr. Cashman. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan?
So I'm going to suggest that we start with bullet one and we seek consensus on bullet one. Go to bullet two, seek consensus, go to bullet three. Then when we get to the end, if there's anything that we feel is missing, we can add it on. But let's just go one by one and see where we are as a board, please.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan, for the process. If we start with number one, my suggestion is to just say as needed or as requested by board members instead of making it a definitive thing that we will have to meet with him. So as needed and as necessary for the process is what I would state.
Well, I don't know if we really need to change that because we have the right to say we, I mean, to change the verbiage because if we do not want to meet with them, then that would be on us if we did not want to meet with them.
But I'm just saying, for the clarity of the document, to just make it very clear and simple so if you don't meet with them, it doesn't have the perception that you're just being belligerent or whatever and don't want to do it. So I'm just a clear, simple statement of meeting individually with each board member as necessary or requested because there may be a time that something comes up that he will have to meet with us and say, because of sunshine, I need to tell you this. So meet individually with each board member as requested or as necessary.
Ms. Vaughn?
I support what Ms. Morgan said and do a consensus on each one. We've got to expedite this because we must get that ad out and we have a hard stop and that we either vote yes, live with it, no, and then if somebody is, is a no, what? Going to ask them then what the problem is, that's.
Perfect. Okay, so bullet one, which is meet individuals with each members to determine individual perspectives. Are we consensus on yes, no, maybe?
Not with that verbiage.
Not with that verbiage. And so, and Ms. Chivinelli, why would you, what would you need changed?
I don't need that. I don't need to have a one-on-one.
Right, and you would not have to. And that's the thing, you have the right to, to meet or not meet with whomever. That's, that would have no, it's your choice.
Okay, so, but I don't want this to be abused. Let's just put it that way.
Yeah, understood, thank you. So it's five to two. Facilitate review of interview questions. Consensus on that one?
Don't we need to figure out what we need to do to get them on board?
Well, I've already stated what, and may I ask?
Yes, please.
I've already stated what would get me on board is changing the verbiage and no one had an appetite to even discuss it, so.
As needed, to add the word as needed, which doesn't really, I mean, yeah, and we're good with changing that as needed?
As needed or necessary.
As needed or requested, you said requested.
Requested or, I had necessary in there because there may become a time that they have to meet with us, that's all I'm saying.
So what, which, what verbiage are you looking to put in there? So that way, Ms. Latan, I mean, Lizette could.
I forgot what I even said now.
You had said as needed or requested and then you said.
That's fine, yes.
So are we good with changing that word? The verbiage. Ms. Chivinelli? As needed or requested?
I don't think we need it, but I'll live with it, I guess. I just want to get through this.
Thank you. Bullet point two, facilitate review of interview questions. Can, good, bad, indifference?
We will explain that as we go.
Yes. Thank you. Facilitate review of interview rubric?
I can live with that.
Live with it, please, Ms. Chivinelli?
Where's the, where's community involvement in with him facilitating it all? I mean, is there, is that, is this it for community involvement?
Yes, well, no, during the meetings, we have meetings that will be scheduled and that will be the community involvement.
Will they be able to speak during that or will it be workshops?
No.
Okay.
So we definitely will be having community involvement.
And can I just add that we may, if I may speak?
Go ahead.
Facilitate is still very vague and I think that needs to be defined, not here and now and today, but facilitate the rubric could mean looking at every aspect of it instead of just answering questions that we may have. And I think perhaps in the discussion with Mr. Cashman, getting his perspective on what that looks like.
Thank you, Ms. Kittens. Facilitate candidate interview process.
Well, I don't know.
That's, that's them helping us.
During the interviews.
Yes.
Then I would take, yeah, okay, that's fine, I can live with that.
To keep everybody on track, thank you very much. Work with district, excuse me, district staff as needed to facilitate the hiring process. So whatever, whatever is needed for us to.
Well, I need more.
I don't know what that means.
Okay, so this came from, because of the fact that, what was that with? Mr. Dupree Bruno, do you recall what we had?
Finger printing and all of that?
Yes, thank you.
And background check?
Yes. Okay.
I don't understand why he would need to be involved in that, though. I don't understand.
At that point, the staff takes over. I don't underst, I don't understand.
So, if I may?
Ms. Patrica?
So we have worked with Ms. McClung and Ms. Stillwell up to this point and they have brought items to staff that had to be completed in order for us to move through this process. Instead of staff facilitating, we're hiring somebody else to facilitate and that person will be going to staff and asking for various things along the way. That is the purpose of that bullet point.
So may I ask?
Ms. Kittens?
So in other words, Mr. Cashman would be acting as liaison for us with staff as needed on certain issues?
As needed.
As needed, I think is the answer, yes.
Yeah, and there's no period anyways, you can add it.
I'm sorry, Ms. Chivinelli?
It's not a complete sentence anyways, there's no period in it.
None of them are complete sentences.
So could I?
Some of them are.
Okay, can I get consensus on that then, please? Be available for the meeting dates and other possible dates agreed upon, which they were already sent out to them so they know what the hours are?
And may I ask what those dates, are those?
The dates that we have.
Action meetings or what?
The dates that we have posted here that are on the website. At this time, we do not have them listed as, the dates are there for us to have workshops, briefings, action meetings, whatever we may need to have to include. We don't have a specific agenda for them yet and as we get them, these are all the whole dates, okay? So everybody's in agreement of that? Thank you. Estimated hours per month was the 10 to 20 hours.
Can you please raise, thank you.
Do we have an agreement on that? Because we really don't know what that will be, so that'll be a negotiated time. And then the fees, it's $200 an hour and capped at 25? And then the terms, as far as either party could cancel this agreement with or without cause within 14 days notice period or as agreed upon by both parties? We want that out, yes? And of course, Ms. Dupree Bruno will be doing the negotiations for the board. Is there anything else that we needed to add in here? At this time? Okay, so can we then take a vote on, I'm going to interrupt now, a vote on the process for? I'm sorry?
The agreement.
The agreement.
May I ask, is there a time, a deadline to facilitate this agreement? Can we have a time certain as to when we get it back?
Okay. Well, we would have to, we have our next meeting. Ms. Dupree Bruno, could you give us an idea of when you think you could get this done and back to us? As far as, I mean, we'd want it done pretty quickly.
Yes, we can make sure that it's done prior to the next meeting if Mr. Cashman is available and we can work it through.
Thank you. Okay, so if I could then ask for the, the vote on the approval for the consultant agreement and?
As amended per your discussions.
As amended per our discussion. Thank you, Ms. Kittens.
Do we have to take public comment?
So if you look on the agenda on board docs, C3 was the approval of the consultant agreement. It said that it was an action item with discussion and the recommendation action was approval of the consultant agreement to facilitate as discussed. So the public was well aware. All three of those agreements were uploaded on board docs. All of the information was there as well. If you look at C2 on the agenda item, the same thing. This was for the consultant and your last vote actually was under C2 with regards to Mr. Cashman, but you had a vote in between that because you went back to decide even if you wanted to have being consultant. But your vote on Mr. Consult, on Mr. Cashman was under C2 and now you're under agenda item C3. Public was properly noticed.
Thank you. So moving to the next item, you have heard the recommendation that the board approve the advertised document. Is there a motion to approve?
Move that we approve the advertisement document.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, I don't think you took the vote on the motion that was pending, which was the motion to adopt the agreement as amended?
Yes, we just took that.
I don't remember voting on that.
Did we not just take that vote?
No, I didn't get it.
I thought I just said that. Can we please take the vote on the approval as amended on the consultant agreement?
And this is a hand vote because it was amended.
Thank you. Hand vote, please.
I missed the amendment.
This is for the amendment on the consultant agreement.
As amended, yeah.
As amended, thank you, seven zero. Okay, so now we are, we're on to number four. You have heard the recommendations that the board approve the advertised document. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve the advertised document.
And second by Ms. Patrica? Okay, and any discussion? And I'm going to turn this over for, to Ms. Vaughn at this portion to speak on this. Thank you, Ms. Vaughn.
Okay, you have before you two paper copies that we're going to be working with, so if you'd have those handy. I'm going to tell you ahead of time, I'm going to be working very swiftly on these. Most everything, not everything, there are a couple of things we have to discuss, but most of the corrections we have already discussed, so. All right, one of the big things is, and I already mentioned that and I sent it to you yesterday. If we look at the candidate, let's see, where is that? The candidate, all candidates interested, here's, here's a change on the two-page document. We have two that we need to go back and forth on. That they need to submit an electronic copy of their resume and cover letter. Now, that is something that we have not discussed and we need to discuss it to put it in there. I'm going to also allow in this discussion, going down to job close date, which is on both copies that we have, Friday, May 21st at 4:00 PM. And as I talked about earlier in this meeting and we have approved the timeline, we're going to need to have these resumes in hand. And so number one, the recommendation from Lizette Rivera was that it's very tight if we wait for the, the paper copies and we might not get enough people or people might be, you know, the mail has been slow lately. So I'm recommending, and we'll get discussion on that in a second, that it go to electronic instead. Secondly, I'm recommending that instead of four o'clock, that we establish either eight or nine, let's just say 9:00 AM, that we establish that all must be in electronically. This will give our board secretaries time to what, and I've talked to, you know, lasagna, now I'm calling you lasagnas. Tanya or Lizette, that's what happens when you put those two names together, you get lasagna. Oh dear, sorry.
Thank you for the levity.
Maybe that could be like J-Lo and all of those, we'll just call our board secretaries lasagna, hey, a little humor. All right, that, what they would do is, they would print each of the electronic copies that came in, including the cover letter, and put together a folder or binder. And again, we would have to make it a point to, at some point, stop by and get that folder, so we would have it over the weekend. So, these are the three things we're considering, making it electronic instead of paper, and changing, actually, the two things, and changing the date, not the date, but the time. All right, discussion on that, Ms. Fisher?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I'm perfectly satisfied to have them forwarded to me electronically in the interest of time.
That's not how it would be, that's not the proposal, and we can talk about that, that the secretaries would hold, and hold these, and then, at the time, they would run off paper copies for all of us, that they wouldn't, they would be sent to the board office, and that we would get them all at once. The original discussion that we had, just to remind you, had to do with confidentiality. Now, I trust all of you, so I can go either way if you want them sent to you individually. So, let's talk about any of those things, any of those three things. So, Ms. Fisher, did you want to say more about sending them individually to you?
No, I just wanted to say that I would be happy to receive them electronically, and I think it would be saving paper and time, and not having to have somebody drive here from wherever they may be at that time.
Okay, so, let's focus on that then. Rather than have the secretaries, they're the ones to print them out, that you would like to have them, when they come in, each one sent to you, and then you either print them out or review them electronically. Okay, Mrs. Patrica, and then Mrs. Jivinelli.
So, Lizette, would you put these, sorry, Ms. Roman, would you put these together in a PDF document, send them to us all at once? Would that be feasible?
Yes.
That would be what I would propose, not individual emails, but ask them to please compile in an electronic book, so to speak, and then send them to us. And Ms. Vaughn, thank you for bringing this to our attention, because I initially, when I saw that, didn't want paper, I wanted electronic, and so I was excited to see that we were moving to an electronic version.
Okay, Mrs. Jivinelli?
And I would need them electronically, because I will be in Arizona, there will not be any way that I can pick those up for that whole week, so, I, there's no way I can do it, so.
So then, for you, and from what Mrs. Patrica said, instead of getting, the thing I worry about is, we get so many emails, the thing I worry about is that accidentally, somehow, we either delete something, or it gets, you know, mixed up in many emails that we get, but the idea of an PDF file, and, Ms. Roman, you could do that, you already said. All right, so we've got that out on the table, and it, that's an excellent comment from Ms. Jivinelli, that she wouldn't be able to get them any other way. Let me just poll each person, then we'll come, we'll come back to second rounds. Okay, Ms. Jordan?
And I'm good with however, you know, we decide to do this, but I do believe that we need to, I like the time that we're changing the time, and I do believe that they all need to come at the same time, not one at a time.
All at once, okay.
Together, so we're looking at all of them with fresh eyes, all together, instead of one last week, and, you know, having preconceived notions, so that's what my preference is.
Okay, Ms. Gittens, what, your comment on this?
Can we just do a consensus that we would receive them electronically all together on the last day?
Okay, and Ms. Morgan?
That's fine.
Okay, second round, is there anybody else that wants to comment? Yes, Ms. Patrica?
Just to alleviate concerns regarding it getting lost in our inboxes, Ms. Roman, would you be willing to text us all when it is sent, so that we will all know to look for it and make sure we don't delete it mistakenly?
Yes.
Okay, so we have, are you talking about each individual one that comes in?
No, when the package, when the electronic book is sent to us.
Okay, so what I am hearing so far is that we prefer, that we're okay with the electronic, that because of situations like Mrs. Jivinelli being out of town, and maybe other reasons why we couldn't quickly get to the office to get a paper folder, that we would like to see them all at once in a PDF file, that would include all the cover letters, that we are okay with changing the time to 9:00 a.m. to allow for the secretaries to have plenty of time to get those things done. Okay. So, anything else on that portion, because I'm gonna move to another topic on this ad? Yes?
Well, I had sent a, I don't know if this is the time to do it, I sent everyone an email, somehow my correction or suggestion did not get out.
And when we get to it, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I want to get to your piece, and if.
Well, yeah, we need to move on.
I know, so, we will get there. And, all right, so, career qualifications, both of these say master's degree or higher, and we talked about documented history, we should be okay on that, yes? Just raise your hand if we're not. Essential job functions, we have exercise, I don't see any changes there. The second one, perform such duties, okay, there's one change there. Policies of the school board and the mission, I think that's just a syntax.
Can I ask if they would pull up the email I sent, so they can see my suggestions on these sections? And everyone the email?
Okay, so you have them on multiple bullet points?
Yes.
Okay, so if you could please?
Everyone should have it, and it's pretty quick. May I do it real quick?
Well, we're going bullet by bullet, so when you have a suggestion on a particular bullet, so was there a suggestion on that bullet number two?
Perform such duties and exercise as assigned.
Okay.
And, you ready to go to the next one?
Yeah, well, let's, let's hit that one first. So, adding the and adding as assigned. Consensus, everybody okay with it, or is there a problem? Okay, so let's add as assigned in that one. Okay, and who, are you doing that, Ms. Roman?
Yes, but I'm not sure where you are right now.
Okay, so it would be, perform such duties and exercises as assigned, I'll write it in on my copy too, as assigned, and then the other correction is, and the mission and vision, instead of mission and vision. This is on, I don't know who, they were just here on the dais, this is the three-page one with the red corrections.
Yeah, they dropped that off for you.
Yeah, because we got another one that's, has some corrections. Are we good? On that, okay. Bullet number three, administer and supervise, one correction that's on here is, instead of saying, provide it by the board and see that, the word ensure, did you have something else, Ms. Gittens, that you sent in?
Yes. Did everyone find my email that I sent? Okay, I'll send it again, but mine just reads at the end, after board is, are executed, it says administer, execute, and supervise directly and indirectly all programs and services and board policies.
So you add it?
Well, no, I just changed the whole thing, it's to take out all the verbiage before that, and just to read, administer, execute, supervise directly and indirectly all programs, services, and board policies.
Okay, period. Okay.
Is that, do you not, Ms. Roman, do you not have a copy of the one that I have?
It was 11:24.
I'm not gonna work off three documents right now.
Well, if she can put up the one, there it is, that's the one that I have, right there. And scroll down, because we're not at the top one. Okay, right there, and all I did was to, I didn't X out, but instead of all of the other sentence, it just briefly say administer, execute, and say that.
So you, in other words, you would have crossed out the first?
Yes. And I will say that I went over this too, as a part of my conversation with some of the consultants, and they agreed on, especially the first one at the top, that we can go back to. And the others are?
Okay, let's finish with that one.
Because I think Ms. Patrica had some changes too. I'm not sure what was on this.
On administer and supervise, that bullet, other comments, whether you like this change or?
Yes, Ms. Morgan?
I think it's a good change.
Okay, makes it more succinct, all right?
It's fine, we just need a comma after execute.
Yep, right.
I'm sorry, I didn't. Comma after execute.
We need a comma after execute.
Okay. Administer and supervise directly and indirectly. So do you want to use the word ensure?
You still need a comma when you have and?
Ms. Vaughn, where are you?
Yeah. Administer, execute, and supervise directly and indirectly all programs. Yeah, and I apologize, but now I'm working off three doc, three things, so it takes me a moment. All right, so what do you think? As changed right here, do we want to keep it? Thumbs up, we're gonna vote on the whole thing, but, okay, so let's make that change. All right, the next bullet is, and this one has, I remember we talked about this next one at our last meeting, that we divided it up, and so, the new bullet would be, serve as secretary of the school board. Okay?
There should be, my only correction was a period after board and the capital advise.
But you already have school board on here.
Of the school board. All right, and then we divided it, and put the next part of the original in provide advice and counsel. So, in other words, we want just serve as secretary of the school board, period. Okay? And then the next bullet, provide advice and counsel, this is in red. I'll tell you what, instead of just doing consensus on all, if I see a hand go up, that means you have a problem with it. Okay, and then the next one, and we've already talked about this, identify and bring forth solutions. Yes, Ms. Patrica?
I had a typo in that, it should be solutions to problems, plural.
Uh huh, it should be. Identify and bring forth solutions to problems while identifying needs and creating plans to address the same. All right, so we add problems, instead of just problem, yes? We can't hear you. Is your mic on?
The next bullet we're working on.
You're working on the recommend?
Working on identify and bring forth.
Yeah.
The next bullet.
Yeah, and it's already in red, in the copy in red.
Are you doing the one that originally was recommended to the school board adoption?
No.
We're still on.
Hold on a sec, just.
Okay. And Ms. Roman's working off of?
She doesn't have.
She doesn't have this one?
This is Ms. Gittens.
Who, who gave her that one up?
Yeah. Ms. Stillwell, is this one?
I've not seen that one.
All right, so these were on the dais, my seat when I came in. Who did the copying here, where did they come from?
So, Tanya did the copying.
Okay.
I don't know where the small print one came from, the large print is the one I had.
I don't either.
Large print came from Ms.?
Patrica, you have an insight?
Yeah, I sent it, I can't remember the date I sent it, but I sent it to?
Ms. Thomas.
Tanya or Lizette?
Batanya?
Batanya.
For that to all of us, I can't find it.
All right.
We just need to make sure that we're working off the proper one, so that way you're not gonna have to redo this whole thing again. So she's getting.
Right, right.
Okay, so we're in recommend.
Yeah, it's identify and bring forth. And it comes after provide advice.
No, they're not.
Well?
Ms. Roman, do you have the proper one?
It appears we have several versions.
Three documents right now.
May I make a suggestion? May I make a suggestion? So, what we're talking about here is Scruton's errors, it's grammar, I don't think that the board needs to approve each grammatical change, I think the substantive issue regarding the date and the time and the delivery to the board has been addressed, there is one more substantive item I'd like to talk about.
Right, right, we're almost there.
I think that, you know, staff can incorporate the appropriate grammatical changes, I don't think we need to wordsmith.
I agree, I do have one section at the top, though, that is. Can we agree to that, Ms. Vaughn?
Everybody, anybody have a problem?
No, I'm good with that.
Patrica and I both have.
Yeah, yeah, I know, we're getting there. Okay, so.
This is Ms. Gittens' document.
Can I go ahead and give my suggestions since she has it up?
Which bullet are we at for you?
No, at the very top, it's not one and two, the red is replacing the first one, and this is the one that I shared with consultants and asked their decision as well, and the majority liked the second one, because it's just clearer. And it's just replacing the first one, as the interim superintendent, you will lead the administrative instructional support staff of Lee County Schools through the strategic plan by planning, developing, maintaining the best possible education, programs, and services. Just switching that for that first one at the top that was a little vague, and that's, if you want to get consensus on that.
Has everybody found that place on? Has everybody found that place on?
It's on your screen.
She's got it up here on the screen.
Okay, okay.
So that's, the question is regarding...
Instructional and support staff.
Switching that.
It's not one and two, Lizette, it's just...
Right, right, that's...
It's just, there's no numbers, really.
Okay. All right, and that is in lieu of which one on the original?
The top one.
The top one.
So that replaces...
Got it, all right. All right, so consensus?
Just put a comma after instructional and a thumbs up.
Okay.
And that, by the way, so there's no question, I was showing Ms. Fisher the grammatical rule regarding commas in a list. That's why I brought my computer over to her.
Oxford comma versus...
Vibration of sunshine, allegation.
Ms. Roman, so the top one, remove that one right there where you're...
Take out that one. Right, just delete that one.
There you go.
Add a comma after instructional, and then delete that part about note at the end.
Well, this is not, this is not the right, okay, because look, Ms. Vaughn, this one has the paper copy.
That's what I was...
No, but don't...
I know, we'll go back. As a matter of fact, we're just going through this right now, and then before we vote to approve it, okay, so so far so good where we are in the document.
And we had agreement on changing that first part?
Yes, yes, all right.
And I think Ms. Patrica had one more thing she wanted to...
I'm trying to make sure that we have everything else, that we have everything else covered. All right, so then Ms. Patrica had a substantive question in changing, you want to talk about your change, Ms. Patrica?
Simply on that bullet item, supervise and maintain a systematic evaluation of the educational, administrative, and support service needs of the district, period. Developing the comprehensive annual and long-term plan doesn't seem appropriate for an interim.
Where are we?
Oh, where it says supervise and maintain.
I sent out an email asking y'all to consider that coming into today.
Right where she has her cursa at.
Systematic evaluation, now.
Okay, and we did also, by the way, while we're looking at that, was that not where we had, no, it wasn't, the support versus supportive?
Yeah, that's, was part of them.
I'll agree with that, developing long-term. I don't know about the annual part because it depends on how long it's going to take us to get a permanent person.
It could take a year, and we're at evaluation time right now.
All right, go ahead, Mrs. Civanelli.
Does that take away from our vision and mission, though, if we don't have that included? I mean, we still have to stay focused on our vision and mission.
Right.
I mean, right?
In my suggestion, no, because vision and mission are in other parts of the document, as is in 2030, just with specific regard to annual plans.
Okay, let me ask a question of Mrs. DePree Bruno, because this is our ad. Now, does the ad want legality? I mean, we still have our superintendent, the job description. The ad is meant to be a short version of that. And so we're spending a lot of time with one word here or there, but this is not a legal document of this is what the superintendent does, and he or she cannot do anything annual. Am I correct?
My understanding is this is just your advertisement.
Yes.
Okay, so I just want everybody to keep that in mind, that when push comes to shove, we still have that document that is the job description, and this is just the ad. Now, we don't want to be, to say anything that's wrong or totally misleading, but I just wanted to bring that up. Okay, Ms. Gittens?
I just wanted to say too, that like Ms. Fisher and several others have said, that the interim is the superintendent for that time. So I really don't think we need to be changing and, you know, and this is directly from the job description, so they could see it on there as well.
All right, this one seems like because it's substantive that we need to have a yea or nay on this, either leave it or change it. How many of you, now, when I say change it, that would be the negative that Ms. Patrica brought up. So we'll put it in the affirmative. Who would like to leave it as we had it originally without this change? Thumbs up if you want to leave it as it is, thumbs down if you want to. Okay, so we have a live with it.
It passes. It passes, we live with it.
It passes. It passes. So we're going to keep it the way it was originally without this change.
Right.
All right, so where are we now? Recommend?
I'd say substantive changes.
Yeah, recommend. We don't have anything else except adding the word Florida law. And it looks like, all right, so let's go back up to the top, if you would please, because that part needs to be changed to what we...
It's first, and are you looking to how about?
She changed it to the electronic and...
Well, those are things that she'll go through and do.
She changed a lot.
Okay. All right.
Time factor is bad.
So, overall, final, final opportunity, sort of. Are we ready to vote on this as our ad, or is there something else that needs to be changed? Ms. Patrica?
So we're going to ask staff to make the Scrivener's changes, right?
Yes.
And I just have to say that if this goes out with a typo in it, my head will explode.
All right, how about?
May I have just a final...
I was just going to suggest, how about before this goes out, because Ms. Patrica's really good at catching these things, that she takes a look at it and we will trust you to only add an S or a comma as needed.
I promise to not change the salary.
Or anything else, except if you see a missing comma or an extra superfluous comma, okay?
Can you please take a consensus on that, please?
All right, consensus on trusting Ms. Patrica to only look at Scrivener errors. All right, so can we vote on this now? Let's, and this will be electronic vote, right? So we're voting on the approval of the ad document as we have just, including all the amendments we have just made. So, vote now?
Motion carries, Madam Chair.
Carries.
Okay, what, and was it, what was the number?
Seven zero.
Seven zero, great. All right, this should be, I think, easy. Never know. The budget. We had talked about a preliminary budget at our last meeting. We had, I think, one that we were waiting on.
If you will, I'll go ahead and read what the, and then I'll turn it back over to you.
Please do that, yes.
Okay, you have heard the recommendations that the board approves the advertisement budget for the search for the interim superintendent with the not to exceed amount of $3,000. Again, that's based off of what we had looked at.
Right.
And Ms. Vaughn, I want to give that back to you.
All right.
Oh, I'm sorry, is there a motion to approve this before I turn it back? Thank you.
No, I'd like to make a motion, please. I move that we approve the advertising budget as provided in the backup documents, less the Wall Street Journal, and not to exceed the amount of $3,000.
Okay, and then we'll go into discussion. And Ms. Vaughn, I'm going to turn that back to you.
Okay, take a look at...
Do we need a second? Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Okay, so everybody sees on their screen, what does this add up to? Are we going to include school spring?
Two, I think it was 2,000, and it was Gittens had added it.
It was under three, I believe.
Two nine something.
Two ninety-nine, ninety-eight.
Okay, so this goes along with, so with the exception of including the Wall Street Journal, the vote is going to be on these sources, these posting sources, and this does not exceed 3,000. Now, if there's some, if there's some mistake or prices have changed and it goes over 3,000, then I'm assuming that, I guess this goes to financial services? Am I correct?
Yep, Ms. Vaughn, I believe also when we spoke about it, bless you, the 749, the access to search resumes, that was removed too.
Right, right.
That took the 290.
That's the lesser figure, we took that out.
Yep, okay.
Ms. Patrica?
Could I amend to take away the $3,000 max in the event it went up $12 on one of these?
Uh huh, yeah, and actually I think that's a good, that's a good idea that...
I'll withdraw my motion and then make a new one.
Works for me.
Is there a second to withdraw?
I move that we approve the advertising budget for all items listed minus the Wall Street Journal and minus the $749 access to something I can't read.
That's, no, no, 749 was, there was a much higher figure for access. I believe the 749 was the basic. And, wait a minute?
No, we removed that one.
We removed it.
We spoke about removing that one, Ms. Vaughn. And that's where Ms. Gittens had gotten that figure from.
So what is the motion that is pending on the floor now?
Okay, the motion is...
I move that we approve the advertising budget as stated in the backup materials, minus the Wall Street Journal, and minus the $749 for access to search resumes for the New York Times.
And do we have a second? Ms. Morgan? Okay, now...
Oh, I see, you know what, I'm sorry, I was looking at, I need to get my, I was looking at school superintendent, the 749 there, not the New York Times. So that's what I was commenting on, the less expensive, the online only.
So we have that, the motion, and it was seconded by Ms. Morgan. Now, if there's discussion, otherwise we take the vote.
Anybody? Ready to vote?
Would you please record your vote then? Ms. Thomas, did you get the...
Since you withdrew the motion, you have to do a hand vote?
So do we have a vote? And Ms. Patrica, please, I'm sorry, reinstate your, reinstate so we can take the vote.
I move that we approve the advertising, wait a minute, did we take the vote on the removal?
Removal, yes.
Yeah. All I did was withdraw my motion.
No, you're, so that Ms. Thomas will have the, I want to make sure she has the right verbiage before we take the vote on that motion.
Approve the advertisement budget for the search of the interim superintendent in accordance with the backup materials, less 749 access to resume, search for the New York Times, and less the Wall Street Journal.
Perfect, thank you. Now, can we take a hand vote, please? Ms. Fisher? Okay, seven zero, motion passes.
You have it back.
Perfect. Okay, thank you, thank you, Ms. Vaughn, on that. Appreciate all the work that you've done. The next order of business is, you have heard the recommendation that the board approved the web page for the interim superintendent's search as discussed. Is there a motion to approve? Ms. Vaughn?
I move to accept the proposed website.
Okay, is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Patrica. And I know we're doing this a little bit different today because we have different people presenting. And on this one right here, we will have discussion. And Ms. Gittens, thank you so much for taking care of this. And Ms. Howard, if you will, please go ahead.
Okay, just, can everybody hear? Is this on?
Yes.
First of all, thank you, thank you, thank you to Ms. Howard. I sent it to all of you so you've had an opportunity. I just wanted to kind of show you on here, you can look at the screen, oh, okay, you can look at the screen, and I'll go through really quickly. As you click on each thing, it takes you to that section. As you scroll down, the process, how to get involved, all of those types of things. We have the search process, get involved, and about the position. This one, I believe, takes us to the, yes, to the job description itself. And we discussed whether or not, you know, our audience for this is the community and the stakeholders. However, somebody might know of someone that would be interested, so that's why we added this piece in there as well. Okay. And we took some ideas from Polk County, and the information that we added down below, though, is on the, as the Ninth largest district, was taken from our impact study for 2019 and 2020, to give them some idea what's what, the process, and you can read the paragraph there. This is giving everyone an opportunity, and we can, that's the good thing about having a website, if we need something changed as the ad changes or something changes, we can just go in and make that adjustment. At this time, this is the process that we have. If, we may want to go back and just look at this and see if it follows what we discussed today. If there were any changes to that, we can make sure to mirror what was discussed in the meeting today. And the last item is how to get involved. And they can click on, watch the board meetings, it will take them directly to that area, view the agendas. They can email or click on that to Outlook or anywhere of that sort. And I know that, this piece I really like too, the keep track of dates on your personal calendar, as it takes you to the calendar, and it gives you, right here, right? Okay, and that gives us the feed, and I won't get into, go ahead. That's why you're here. It's not going. This one?
Yeah, right there.
Okay, there we go. Okay, and the calendar, as you see on the right-hand side, one of the little tricks, that PC, if you look in how to get involved, stay informed and get involved, whatever, speaking during public comment. And what we added was PC, so any of the dates on the calendar that have PC mean that there's... mean that there's pub, means there's public comment. Yes, Ms. Fisher?
So can you back up a little bit to the process where it says, where it concludes there? Board members will select a consultant, advertise the position, set up individual interviews between board members and applicants, narrow down the finalists or select the finalists?
Well, the narrowed down is, oh, okay, I see what you're saying, yeah. So we can change that to select the finalists and then conduct the interviews with the finalists. And looking at Polk Counties and some others that I saw, when we get to that point, we can add a place to click here or even down below so that they can watch that as well. Yes, Ms. Fisher?
And, and so do we need to say the finalists and conduct interviews with the finalists? Or can we just use the word finalist and eliminate the?
We can just change it to finalist. And if there's any verb, verbiage that you guys see, you can just send me a quick email, we can do that. Yes, Ms. Patricca?
Thank you, thank you, thank you for doing this. This is fantastic. It makes me wish my kids were younger. The grocery cooking and the donuts make me hungry.
I, I love the donut picture.
Really very well done, bless you. I would ask for the same sort of permission that I was given for the job interview because there are a lot of grammatical errors throughout that I'd like to address before it goes live. And I don't want to go through them here and now I just.
No, 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 for time's sake, if you can get them to me.
It, it would really be a lot more efficient for me to sit with you or somebody who's not on the board and just point out where the issues are because there's a lot of them in there.
Well, if it's, if it's Grivner area errors, I can't say that.
That's all it is, nothing substantive, I want no substantive changes.
Then can you just copy it to Word and change it and then we'll just put it in?
It's really hard for me to copy and paste.
Okay.
I, I can't copy and paste those, like, if you, if you put your, your mouse, hand, finger thing over board members will be taking applications, I can't copy that. At the top of the page, under process, the words at the very top of the page.
Go up, go up.
Way up the top of the page, if you hover over process.
My candidate is Ms. Eld.
Hover over process.
Oh, okay.
I can't copy those words.
Okay, no, no problem.
If I could just talk to someone and walk them through where those changes are needed, that would be the most efficient way for me to manage that.
Is, you know, if it's just Grivner's errors, that, I mean, that's fine.
That's all it is.
Would it be okay if they give you a call?
Can you, can we have a consensus on me doing that, please?
Ms. Javonelli?
I'm good.
Okay, thank you.
And does anyone else have any other besides just?
Ms. Morgan?
I'm a little concerned with the first statement under seeking an interim superintendent, build upon the legacy of the district. That suggests to me an activist role. And frankly, I'm not, that, that concerns me because I don't want someone coming in thinking that they're going to take Invision 2030 and start playing with it if they're only here for six months and then, and we're getting ready to hire a permanent superintendent, at which point we will have an opportunity to engage in, you know.
So.
That is what we're going to be doing.
We just change it to continue with the legacy of the district?
Yes.
Continue would be better, yeah.
Okay, consensus on changing that to continue?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes.
You need to write this, or you got it. You got a better brain than me.
I really liked that phrase, the legacy part, that was awesome.
Any other substantive things? Yes, ma'am.
We don't have any older kids in here.
I was thinking about that.
It's pretty much all little kids.
But little kids are cute. No, I'm sorry, okay, no, I get it, I get it.
Served kids too.
We'll, we'll add some older ones.
And we serve disabled kids and I, I would like to see.
Inclusive.
Yeah.
Okay, we will, we will change the pictures to be more reflective of our students. Okay. All right, point taken, and we will.
Baby with the donuts.
I love the donuts.
It's our pre.
Okay, so.
That's true.
Scroll down. Scroll down to how to get involved, and I do want to make sure I said it in my email to you. It was very clear that everyone did not want anything where you could see comments. This is not, and let me, you explain, Laura, how this works, please?
This is just a form where they just fill out their first and last name. All forms need email addresses. That allows you to get an email. They can make a comment. It will go directly to your email and you can reply back. If they type in their email address, that allows you to hit reply to give them back to that message. So it's not, it's not anything that's going to show up on the screen. Once they apply it, it goes directly to your emails.
Right.
Ms. Morgan?
That's what we wanted to make sure that you know. It's not like Facebook or other digital services that everybody can see everyone's and feed off of, oh, they said that I can too.
Ms. Morgan?
I am real concerned with board members responding individually to comments received. Now, if the comments are shared with all board members, that's fine. But I personally don't think that we should be responding individually to members of the public on comments they make about the search or whatever.
Well, can I make a point of that? Honestly, I, we didn't talk about, you know, responding. The, the thing that I like about it is that we can, this goes into a database that we can print out a spreadsheet.
Information.
With all the information on there. So if someone then wants to follow up with someone, that, we all have the, you know, right and ability to do that. Yes, Ms. Vaughn?
Ms. Vaughn?
Instead of saying comments for, well, call it comments for board members, but instead of putting in first and last name, why don't we just have all of the comments go directly to the board office? And then the board office, as, is, as we always do, one of our secretaries sends it out to all of us.
We can.
Board members, we're board members.
Yeah, we can have this as just a, a simple form, so it can go to any email that you want. And like Ms. Gittens said, that it does go into a, a spreadsheet. So, you know, if you want just to see the spreadsheet, you're more than welcome to, you know, get that. Or again, it can go to any email address that you want. It can go to all email addresses, it can have as many email addresses. So it's all up to you guys, how you want to.
Going along with what Mrs. Morgan said, that she makes a good point. And actually, instead of board office, if it just went to board members, it would automatically go to all of us. And we might even want to have a subject line in here to identify automatically that it's a comment from this, this page. That's what I would add.
Well, I thought we could have it go to a separate, I mean, it's however we set it up, correct? So we can set it up behind the scenes, so to speak, that, that people are not going to have to make that choice. Ms. Howard can.
Give them, you misunderstood. I'm saying, don't give them a choice. Make it either, okay, and that's an option too, a, a specific email address that goes to all of us, or without setting up specific email address, just go to board members and have an automatic subject line that identifies that it's coming from this page.
Well, and that's what I'm saying, rather than having to say that, we can have a separate email that it goes to. Or if you want it, the thing I was trying to avoid, board, board office, whatever, can get very, very busy. So that's why I'm saying if we, if we send it to a specific one, it collects it all there and we have access to it. Am, am I missing your?
No, kind of like what they did with the pandemic, I, I would think. So we always knew when, you know, somebody was asking questions or concerned. So just like your heading of that, that line that would come out to us that would say search or whatever. So we know that that's exactly what this is for, when it comes to all of us.
Said that.
Yeah, we can add a subject line so that it's, whatever you guys want to, as a common subject line, we can do that.
We can look at that and we know immediately that's what it is and that's done. And then everybody gets it and life is good.
Madam, Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I, I want to remind you about the time.
Yes.
We, we're just about done, just one other thing. The, the keep track of dates, like I said, they can go in and configure it so that it, all of the dates and everything shows up on their phone. Because a lot of people will look at this on their phone as opposed to on a computer. I think I mentioned about the PC. And when it's launched, we can, you know, explain to people when they can speak at which meetings. And I think that's very important because people will come thinking they can make a comment. And we can put somewhere, at this meeting, you can speak. At this one, it's just seating and that type of thing. There was one other thing, and I can't remember it now. What else? Okay.
I'm really sorry, given the time, I have to call the question.
Okay, all right.
Really appreciate the work, but I really have to call the question.
Okay, is, if there's nothing from anyone else, you, we will get the errors out. And I think we need to get this out as soon as possible. It's ready, it's just not live or hot for everyone. And if you would agree, we can do that. We can do it whenever. So I'm saying this weekend is my suggestion. So the question to me would be to the board, are you all in agreement with the corrections once we make them? Making sure that the timelines and, and everything are fine, that this weekend that we would go ahead and put it out?
Well, go ahead, Ms. Vaughn.
I, I'm not going to support it with the way the email is right now. I think it's great, I love it, you did a great job. But I think it's really an important point that we need to get that email under control. And, and I think the best way to do that would be the way I suggested or possibly establishing, but, you know, why establish another new email address when we can just put board members and an automatic subject line? And then we can even.
No, she said she would do that.
Madam Chair?
Ms. Howard already said she would do that, Ms.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, ladies.
I know that there was a call to question, but I don't know if you had recognized the board member to call the question. If so, it's time for the vote.
Okay, I apologize.
Is there a motion on the table right now?
No.
No, I was trying to put one on.
I thought there was a motion to approve the webpage.
I mean, yes, we do have that motion.
I motion to table until Tuesday so that all this can get worked out and then we'll approve on Tuesday.
Well, I was going to suggest it be Monday. We have, don't we have workshop Monday?
Yeah, but it's not an action meeting. We can't approve, we cannot approve.
And it has to, I say, I agree with you.
Can we preliminarily just approve it with corrections?
It's a substantive thing and we're not going to have the support of Ms. Vaughn. I, I'm.
But can we take a vote then and see?
I'm motioning to table until Tuesday.
There's been a motion to. Motion to table, there's no debate, we go straight to vote.
So may I have a vote then to table this until Tuesday? Looks like it passed. Okay, but I, I want to say, Ms. Gittens, this is fabulous and I can't wait to see, you know, the, what we, what you come up with for Tuesday. We do have good of the order, so I'm going to go around to see if anyone has it. I know we have to stop, but Ms. Javonelli?
I don't have good of the order, I was, all I want to say is Happy Mother's Day, everybody, and y'all have a great weekend.
Thank you. Ms. Patricca?
Happy Teacher Appreciation Week.
Thank you. Ms. Fisher?
Thank you, teachers, and thank you, mothers.
Thank you. Ms., Ms. Gittens?
Yes, thank you, teachers and mothers. And I will be sending out an email to all of you with a concern that I have. And we can discuss it probably next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, as I said earlier, my good of the. To see us start the process of collecting data on national search firms so that, and I, I've started to pull it up, but I didn't. I see we do have a workshop.
Monday.
On Monday. It will be too soon to vote on our, on Tuesday, the 11th. But do you think that's something doable, that we can somehow come up with? I'm assuming that the HR has some suggestions, but other suggestions? I mean, we're, we're out of time, so, but I, I really, really feel like we need to have the. A list of, of search firms so that while we are waiting for our resumes to come in, that we also have initiated the search firm search.
Ms. Morgan, did you have a question?
Yeah, I do. I mean, I, I think that we all need to understand better the process before we dive into a search firm. And I think we can do that very quickly, but I'm just saying that I think we need to understand the process and understand what it is that we are expecting of a search firm before we pick someone to do the search.
But then in the meantime, too, we can go ahead and start collecting them as they come in, because they're already coming in. So as they come in, I can certainly have them copied and sent out to you all. But we are already receiving that because people already are in the know.
Can we agree that you, you will schedule a meeting for us to have this discussion at ASAM?
I will definitely do that, but we are collecting them, Ms. Vaughn.
Okay, because I've actually, personally, only received one, so maybe.
I haven't received any, so.
Okay, just, I've received one. So you have, probably they send it to the chair, could you send us?
I've only, yeah, I only, I have two.
Oh.
Yeah, and they will, they will begin. But I do have, I'll send it. I'll copy on it. Okay, and then, Ms. Gittens, did you have something to? Okay, Ms. Morgan?
No, I will say what everybody else said, Happy Mother's Day. And thank you, teachers and staff, everyone who's supporting kids in schools this year.
Thank you. And, and I will say Happy Mother's Day, Happy Teachers Appreciation Week, Happy Food Service people. Yes, they are my people. So thank you for everything and feeding our children. And thank you all for working, Ms. Vaughn, for what you're doing, Ms. Gittens, for putting this together, all of us for being here and getting us through this process. I really appreciate each and every one of you. And our Ms. Thomas and Ms. Roman. So thank you. And Ms. DePree Bruno, do you have anything? Okay, so the next scheduled meeting will be on Monday, May 10. There will be a board workshop at 1:00 PM. On Tuesday, May 11, there will be a board briefing at 1:00 PM and an action meeting at 6:00 PM. At this point, having no further business to come before this body and seeing no objections, this meeting is adjourned.